Do you have the agenda in front of you? Are there any changes or modifications of any kind to the agenda?
There is a revised agenda. There was a contract added under Other Business, and those are at your places.
At our table. Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Seven minutes.
Second.
Here back here. Could you turn on the speakers?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think maybe it'll... They are on, but it may be that if we settle down everyone, we can all hear. So there's a motion and a second to approve the agenda as modified. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. It's approved. You also have before you the minutes from January 10th. Are there any changes or questions about these minutes? Is there a motion to approve?
Seven minutes.
Second. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. They are approved. This point in the agenda, we hear from council members who are present who wish to be heard at the beginning. I'm not sure if I see too many council members yet. So we will move right into the next item, and I will turn it over to our staff for items for deferral and withdrawal.
There is one item on the withdrawal agenda. It's item number three, and this is a request to rezone from OL to CS, OL and CS to IWD zoning for property located at 1934 Old Murfreesboro Pike, and the recommendation is to withdraw.
Unless there's opposition, we'll consider that withdrawn. Okay.
Then I'll move to the deferral agenda, and there are three items on the deferral agenda. The first item is item number one. This is a request to amend Title 17 of the Metropolitan Code to delete historic home events as a use and to add special event center as a new use to be permitted in certain zoning districts and permitted with conditions in certain zoning districts, and the recommendation is to defer indefinitely. And then on page five of your agenda, item number four, this is a request to rezone from MULA, CF, and ORI to MUGA and MUIA zoning for various properties in Midtown between I-440 and I-40, and the recommendation is to defer to the April 25, 2013 Planning Commission meeting. And the last item on the deferral agenda is item number five, also on page five. This is a request to rezone from RS-5 to SPR zoning and for final site plan approval for properties located at 1729 and 1731 Knoll Street to permit a maximum of five residential units, and the recommendation is to defer to the February 14, 2013 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. So the recommendation from staff is to defer items one, four, and five. One is indefinite. Four is when?
April 25.
April 25, and five?
February 14.
It's February 14.
February 14.
Is there a motion to approve the deferral of these three items? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. Okay. Now for our consent agenda.
And before I move to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised you should contact independent legal counsel. I'm now going to read the consent agenda, and the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. There will not be individual public hearings, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The first item on the consent agenda is item number six on page five of your agenda. This is a request to extend preliminary approval for the Travis Place subdivision, approved for 140 single-family residential lots, and to grant a variance from Section 1-9.2 of the subdivision regulations. And the recommendation is to approve the extension and also to approve the grant to grant a variance to Section 1-9.2 of the subdivision regulations. The next item on your agenda, on the consent agenda, is on page six, and these are items under Other Business. The first is item eight, exclusion of including parent companies and subsidiaries of American Safety Casualty Insurance Company, American Southern Insurance Company, Bond Safeguard Insurance Company, Lexon Insurance Company, and National Grand Mutual Insurance Company for providing certainty bonds for one year pursuant to Section 6-1.2D of the Metro subdivision regulations, and this item was deferred from the January 10 meeting. The next item is item number nine, and this is a contract between the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County and Gresham Smith &amp; Partners for professional services related to the conduct of the Southeast Area Transportation and Land Use Study, and the recommendation is to approve. And I don't think I read the recommendation for item eight. It is also to approve. And the final item is a new employee contract for Kerry Logan, and the recommendation is to approve.
There's no opposition from anyone present or on the commission to approving these on consent? I suggest we have a motion and do so.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. Which leaves us with the following items to be discussed. Brenda, would you mind going over those for people who are here?
We have items number two and item number seven.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Holloman, we had just passed the recognition of council members, and we'd be glad to hear from you at this point if you'd like.
Thank you.
Great.
Apologize for being a couple of minutes behind. I actually wanted to speak on two items. One was item number four, which I believe you deferred, and I just want to thank you for the deferral and the opportunity to allow the folks in my district who had raised concerns when this issue came before you the first time with regard to the impact that more density in this area can have, and their desire to be sure that as we move forward with density increase in this area, that we address important design elements, particularly pedestrian access, as well as preservation of several historic structures that are in that area. And I understand that we're going to defer for 90 days to provide the opportunity to look at creating some UDOs to run in tandem with that upzoning. And so I just want to say I appreciate that deferral. Appreciate Council Lady Langston's willingness to work together on that issue. I also came today for item number seven, which is the subdivision on Woodmont. That is in Councilman McGuire's district. I believe you received a letter from Councilman McGuire. I just want to come in support of what Councilman McGuire says in his letter. My district is immediately adjacent to this area. Some properties are basically just across the street from this, and I, too, have received a lot of concern about the subdivision of specifically this lot, but in general of some of these 1920s estate lots into several smaller lots, and the lack of consistency that some of those subdivisions would provide vis-a-vis the context in that area. And I understand you have subdivision regulations to apply, but I just wanted to report to you that I have received an inordinate level of concern from my district about that, and I would hope that we could defer that and maybe think creatively about ways that we can gain infill development in that area, but also be respectful of that traditional building style along Woodmont and some of that adjacent area. And then finally, I have an interest in the bill, and I apologize under the item number and if it's going to be discussed, but in the idea of taking the nonconforming lots that are RS 3.75 and trying to allow those to have push out from a three-foot setback to a five-foot setback, I do represent some areas that have some of these smaller nonconforming lots, and I am just interested in seeing that as we do that, which I think to provide context in the area may be a positive, but I hope that we'll also consider that being a trade-off, so that if we expand out that footprint, that we keep down the height so that we don't end up with just an even larger, taller building in those areas, but that if we give on the setbacks, that we also make sure that the height of those infill structures are consistent in terms of height with the existing housing stock around them. So I've spoken with one of the builders that I think has been working with planning on this issue, and we've had positive conversation about maybe having an amendment when it comes to council that would address that issue. So I hope you'll consider that as well. And with that, Ms. Chairman, thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak on those bills.
Thank you. Councilman Holloman, your district comes right up to Woodmont there, doesn't it?
It does.
It's just the other side.
It's immediately across.
Right. Thank you. All right. Any other council members come in? All right. Our next item is number two.
This is item two, and this is a text amendment to change the bulk standards requirements for nonconforming lot area. Those are lots that have less than the minimum square footage of the zoning district that it falls within. Currently, within the RS, RM, RMA, AR-2A, and AG districts, a single-family structure may be constructed on a legally created lot that contains less than the required minimum lot area, but at least 3,750 square feet in area. The bulk standards that would occur, that would apply to those structures that would be built on those lots would be the bulk standards of the zoning district that it falls within, and it doesn't matter what the actual size of the lot is, those bulk standards would apply. What the proposed zoning code amendment would do would be to apply the bulk standards of the equivalent RRRS district for the actual lot size, and this would result in structures that would be more fitting to the actual lot size rather than trying to have long, narrow houses on narrow lots. I want to point out that this does not increase the amount of lots that would become buildable. All of these lots are already buildable, and it would already be eligible for a building permit for a single-family dwelling. All that would change in this would be two of the bulk standards, which are the building coverage in some cases might decrease on the amount they could cover on the lot, and the minimum setbacks would be reduced in some cases. The rear setback and the maximum height of buildings, they're the same for every zoning district, so those would not change. Also, fronts setbacks are determined by the type of street you're on, and so that wouldn't be impacted by this text amendment. And here's just an example of some of the lots that we have. This lot here, they're both 3,750 square feet in size with a 25-foot frontage and 120 feet in depth. On this particular lot here on the right, it would show the building footprint that could be built if you had the R6 zoning standards, and on the left would be the 3.75 standards. And the difference in the actual, excuse me, in the footprint you could get is that using the 3.75 standards, you would be able to get about 2,000 square feet as a footprint, but using the standards of the R6, it would be 1,600 square feet. And this would mean that in order to maximize the potential, you might have to go higher on the narrower house, and you possibly could reduce the height on the wider house because you would have adequate square footage by allowing a wider building. And the staff recommendation of this text amendment is to approve.
This item is open for public hearing. If you're here to discuss this item, number two, nonconforming lot area, please come forward and speak after identifying yourself. And if there are more than one or two folks, please come up and line up behind each other.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Kenner. I'm one of the builders that Councilmember Holloman spoke with on this issue. I was one of the people that tried to initiate this text amendment because on these RS 3.75 lots that I keep finding in R6 overlays, I'm currently building a structure that's 15 feet wide because it's a five-foot setback on either side. And so contextually, these things don't match the neighborhood because they're a little skinnier than most of the houses around them, and they're two stories tall like most of the houses around them, but the width doesn't quite fit for the neighborhood. And so we looked at it, and we said, well, there's a zoning regulation that applies that's the next step down from R6 or R5, which is RS 3.75, which allows a setback of three feet. And so according to those setbacks, we could build something that was 19 feet wide at that point, and contextually, that becomes much better for the neighborhood. One of the things that Brenda pointed out was that this doesn't multiply the amount of lots I can build on. I'm not building any more density than what's already there. I am simply coming in and creating a better product that's more viable for the community, and it's a better product for the contextual aspects of the streetscapes. One of the things that we've had pushback on is people don't like the skinny homes no matter what, and one of the things that I'm trying to get through to some of the neighborhood members is that I could build these things all day long at 15 feet because they're there. These lots are there. They're existing, and as current code standards sit, I can do it all day long. But if I can build them at 19 feet, I can think it could make everybody in the community a lot happier. So that's one of the things that we've been trying to push through with this ordinance.
We normally take everyone who's for a proposition. Is there anyone else who is for this? I'd like to speak on behalf of this suggested text amendment. Okay. If anyone wants to speak against, this will be the time. Please give us your name and...
My name's Frank Stabile. I live in the Nation's neighborhood. I live on Kentucky Avenue. And what Mr. Kenner is saying, I guess, is debatable of whether he's making a better product for the neighborhood. I would like to say that I'm probably speaking on behalf of 100 neighbors who are not in favor of what he's doing there. And, you know, with the setback, you're still getting a, you're still getting a long, narrow house, and I would hope we could kind of stick with some sort of continuity and history there where you're taking lots that, whether they're 50 feet wide or they're 42, I mean, he couldn't do it if it was 45 or 38 or what have you, but 50, these 50-foot lots and put one house back. A lot of the practice is buying a lot that is 50 feet, 50 feet by 150, knocking the house down and building these two houses. So I'm glad to hear that he has, or he heard there was some opposition and did talk to some people in the neighborhood association and wanted to discuss some of this with us. I would like to see that you guys defer this and let us talk with him, get some height restrictions into this, maybe get some other aesthetics into this, but ultimately, I think it's a detriment to the neighborhood when you're building these houses. There's still, anyway, you look at it, 19 feet, 15 feet, it's a skinny house. It doesn't fit into what's happening over there, and hopefully, there's many of us who are working towards revitalizing this neighborhood, and I hope you would see that we can try to move in a good direction and put the proper-sized houses there. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Frank Parrish, and I also live on Kentucky Avenue, and I live directly behind two of his homes that are being built. My wife seen them the other day for the first time, and she liked how it had a heart attack. They are atrocious. They're 15 feet wide, 30-something feet tall. They look like a brand-new addition to what they call a house that you can see all the way from front to back. I can't remember right this minute. You'll have to forgive me.
Shotgun.
Shotgun. These are two-story shotgun houses, and they look terrible. And if you don't believe me, go over on Fifth Avenue North in North Nashville. I also own a piece of property, and you got 50 or 60 of them over there. It looks terrible. It's not been anything that improved the value of anyone's property in the neighborhood. It's a total detriment. Now, I just found out about this a couple of hours ago, so I'm not prepared, and I can't speak eloquently about it. However, I do know that the gentleman has often talked to our Neighborhood Association on the 5th of February and said he's willing to listen to alternatives to what he may build, and we appreciate that. And therefore, I'm not really opposing him until we find out exactly what he's willing to do for us. And therefore, as with the other gentleman, I would like to have it deferred. But may I say that if anyone has any taste or interest in our neighborhood being bettered, we have been the ghetto of West Nashville since way before I was alive, and I'm 73 years old, and I've lived there most of my life. I own multiple properties myself. I'm not going to tear them down and build anything, and if I did, we have many builders. I don't have a list with me. I'm unprepared, and I apologize. But several builders are building beautiful new homes over there that fit the properties and make the neighborhood look better and increases the value of the properties.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your time, and thank you so much.
I think I forgot to mention there's a two-minute time limit, so...
Hi. My name is Maggie Odle. I am a resident of the neighborhood there. I live on Michigan Avenue, and I am a Realtor. I was born and raised. I went to McCann Elementary. I went to school in the neighborhood, and I've lived there. I've owned my own home there for 11 years. I am active in the neighborhood as a Realtor, and I can tell you that our trend is looking for the larger, single-family homes. I think it is a detriment to the neighborhood to see these smaller, smaller width homes come into the property. It does detract. I understand. I'm with, I'm pro, you know, more density. I know we need to do some things to revitalize our urban core. I'm all about that. I want to see green initiatives. I want to see sidewalks in our neighborhood. I want to see a real revitalization. I really don't think this is really the way to go. I would like to see us have limits. If a property's been zoned 50-plus years, if it's had a single-family home on there, I think we need to respect that and not have... I understand if someone has the ability now, the law enables them to come in and to purchase a property if it's been divided as two homes and to come in and resubdivide that lot out. But I think that they should have to come in and get permission on anything that's had a 50-foot, you know, 50-foot lot that's been in existence that's had a single-family home on it because it is changing the flow of our neighborhood. We have increased traffic, and we already have heavy traffic on 51st Avenue with a lot of trucks and stuff coming off of Centennial Avenue. We already have some issues there, and we want to see real community building and things going on in our neighborhood, and I feel that this is a detriment. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I also would like to ask you to defer.
All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter? Any public hearings? I did have one preliminary question before we go here. Brenda, you, the councilman spoke about potential height, a modification here that would deal with height. What is the staff's thought about that as a general proposition?
We did have some discussions about that, but I'm not sure we came to a conclusion about how we could incorporate that into the code, what you would use as a standard. Right now, if the house beside one of these houses was on a conforming lot, a lot that met the requirements for the zoning code, it could be built to three stories, and I believe that's a 45-foot height limit. So that's for all R and RS zoning districts. Single-family houses and duplexes can be built to 45 feet or three stories right now. There's no distinction between zoning districts.
There could be, though.
There could be, yes. But currently, there isn't.
Okay.
Let me, this is one of the issues that has come up over the years in terms of dealing with infill lots and all that. I think the comments that you've heard today, that all the houses are built under the current codes. I mean, so this amendment wouldn't necessarily change someone's ability to do what they're doing today. They could, even after this amendment, they could build exactly the same house as being built today. So even if you, there may be a broader amendment that's needed to achieve the objectives that are being discussed here is all I'm trying to get to.
Andre.
I think there's a lot of interesting discussion going on. One of the questions that I had was that it's county-wide, and I understand this came out of a Sylvan Park Nation's sort of general thought process, and I just wondered if, as the staff, have we thought through the effect that it's going to have in neighborhoods all over the county, and if we really want to make it county-wide? I'm just, I'd like to hear from everybody about that. I don't have an answer, but that's my understanding. It says county-wide. Am I in the right place?
No, it's a county-wide ordinance.
It is. It's correct. You're all looking at me like I've lost it.
And these types of lots are...
Right. So it affects...
These types of lots can be found throughout the county.
Right.
They tend to be concentrated more in areas that were outside of the city, in the county, that were close to the city limits, like the Nation, Sylvan Park. Also, you find them in the Lakewood area and in Hermitage area, the older areas that were platted in the 60s, before it was required that they needed to be platted in order to have a buildable lot.
Okay. And I'm just, for understanding, when it says it doesn't change the number of buildable lots, there are already lots this size that are there that we're discussing.
That's correct. If you have a lot that was created, that was platted before a certain time, and that was the date when sometime in the 60s, you became required to do a plat if you had a lot smaller than five acres. But a number, there were many plats that were recorded before that time, and when the law changed, there was a grandfathering of those plats that were in place at the time. So those lots exist now, and as long as those are 3,750 square feet in size, and you go to the building codes, the zoning administrator will give you a permit to build a house on that property.
So if there were a lot that were 100 feet wide, and I wanted to divide it down into these sizes, it wouldn't, that's not what we're talking about.
No, that's not. You couldn't divide a property, you couldn't come in with a plat now and divide the property and have, create a nonconforming lot. So this is only for lots that are already existing.
This is not correct. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, no. She has the floor.
Okay.
Okay. So that's, I just want to be sure that this is for the existing, nonconforming lots from back in the 60s.
That's correct.
That are already narrow, and they're already small, and they'll either be vacant or they'll have a 15-foot house on them, or if we do this, they might have a wider house.
That's correct. And Joey Hargis is here from the Codes Department, and he can give you the exact dates where you would have had to have your lot...
Let me just make sure that everybody understands. These are platted lots. These are lots of record. Now, these lots historically may have, somebody may have bought two or three lots and put a house on them, but that does not change the fact that they are three-platted lots. So if they remove the house, they are still three-platted lots.
So the existing, underlying lots are already there?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. That helps. Thanks. And then you mentioned, when you were discussing it, something about the possibility of a height limit. I know Rick asked this. Is there, is there language that would put a, could put some shaping of the height if we give the width that we could put in here, or is this not the right tool for that?
Again, no, I think, I think there's some contextual standards that we've talked about and presented to the commission and presented to council over the years in terms that could be reintroduced. The issues that were addressed today are not issues that this will solve. I mean, if you don't pass this, those houses will still be built. That's the point. That isn't to say that we wouldn't support some type of contextual standards that would go through there. The whole purpose of this was to try to address the buildings that are being built now by providing more of a footprint so that you didn't have to go quite as tall. If you only have a smaller footprint, then you're going to go taller to get an amount of square footage than you would if you have a larger footprint. I think we understand the points, and we'll be more than happy, in fact, probably pretty excited if there are some contextual standards for support out there in the community for contextual standards. We'll be glad to run that up the flagpole again. There just hadn't been historically.
By contextual standards, you mean like height?
Yeah, that would relate new construction to the context around it. I mean, that's, I mean, and that's historically been the problem. I mean, it's been the problem all over this community with tear downs and new construction. In some cases, it's probably appropriate for larger homes as areas are changing. In some cases, it may not be, but we haven't, there are several ways to do that, and we've tried to present those over the years, and there hasn't been community support for them, so maybe that's changing.
Well, what other than height, what would you regulate?
Some of them would be massing. It could be the width of them, where you're trying to get, you're trying to get a consistent, a consistent width there. But primarily, it's the, what you're trying to deal with is, if you're looking, if you're walking, going down a streetscape, is the massing of the buildings that are adjacent to each other. So there's a consistent massing through there, which deals with height and width, and space between buildings.
Well, and sometimes slopes, if you can push back, instead of having a straight wall that's 45 feet tall, you can push back or set back with a porch or something. There are different ways to handle it.
Okay.
Okay. That'll hold me for a minute. Thanks.
Thank you, Andre. I want to do something a little unusual because I know we closed the public hearing, and I know I cut the gentleman off, but would you mind if we see, if we asked if he has a specific question that we could, or point of view? If you could come back up and ask your question.
I'd be happy to ask you to clarify what it was you wanted to say.
No, that's quite all right. I snapped at you.
I mean, this probably expresses, I'm, that is probably an expression of how emotional the neighborhood is about this item, and I spoke to Joey, I spoke to him back in October about the plating, and that's why, sorry that I interrupted you, but this, when you say there's a 100-foot lot, you can turn that into, if the plating is there, you can turn that into now whatever the math is. So it's not that, I'm just trying to say that you're saying that there may not be enough buildable lots, or there aren't any more, but you're actually creating more, if that makes sense. That's what I was trying to get to.
I think the point is what I made. It had to have been platted. It may be today, one 100-foot lot, appearing to be one 100-foot... It may be today, one 100-foot lot, appearing to be one 100-foot lot, but it may have been platted 100 years ago at four 25-foot lots. And if the last plat shows four 25-foot lots, then they can tear that down and there are four 25-foot lots.
Exactly.
You can't create any more new lots.
Okay. So, just... Okay. I'm sorry. I thought you were thinking there wouldn't... You couldn't build more houses.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
No, that's helpful because...
Andre?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, in listening to the testimony, it seems like the bill somewhat addresses a few issues about, you know, keeping it similar to other neighborhood houses. But I would be also... I like the idea of reducing the height as well because that seems to make sense. And I was going to ask Councilman Claiborne, you know, was the intent to solve all of the issues or just to solve the width issue when you filed this particular bill? I mean, it seems like a good thing, this particular ordinance. And I know we're not trying to solve the world's problems for planning in Nashville and infill issues, but I was just wondering what your intent was.
I think the original intent was to address an immediate need that was presented. And as a lot of things, immediate needs are just that. And there are subsequent needs that surface after that. So, certainly, going back to what Mr. Bernhardt said, you know, if there are other things that would make this a better adjustment to the code, then, you know, we're certainly at a point where we can do that.
Well, that seems reasonable. And I know infill, you know, we all, you know, say infill's good and this and that. But when you really start drilling down into infill, you know, you really... It's tough to address every single issue. And I know that these things come up, but initially, it seems like it addresses some of the problems. And so, that's... I think we're moving in the right direction, I guess, is what it seems like on this.
Comments?
Hunter?
Along the lines of Andre's earlier question, how prevalent is the situation? And we focused on one neighborhood, but not only... Well, how prevalent is this situation?
We did a brief look at the number of substandard lots that would be throughout the county that were 50 feet in width or less because we thought with the 50-foot width house, you don't have the same... Lot, you don't have the same issues about the long, narrow house. And we found about 4,000 lots that might be substandard. It was a coarse look at it. We would have to do a lot more in-depth look to give you an exact number. But again, they tend to be in areas that were outside the original city and platted when they were part of the county and may well have been platted under a different zoning... Well, they were platted under a different zoning code and may have been the right-sized lot at the time for the zoning district that was in place.
Also, I wanted us to think about, and maybe staffs, I'm sure, already thought about this, but if this applies to all of the R, RS, RM, so on districts, is there an implication on larger lots? We're sort of trying to solve an issue on the small lots, but on some of the larger lot neighborhoods, Creve Hall, you know, half-acre, one-acre lots, if you've got it, you know, if you've got, you know... If this is going to apply, what would the implications be with regard to setbacks?
This would only apply if the lot couldn't meet the normal setbacks anyway. If it meets the normal setbacks, then this proposal wouldn't apply.
I mean, if it couldn't.
If it... Basically, right.
Right.
There tends to be fewer of these as you move further from the center of the county. The concentration... Or there's more of them in those older neighborhoods than there are to the neighborhoods as you move outside of the downtown or move away from the downtown, closer to the county borders. If there are lots in Creve Hall that had been platted at a smaller than what they exist now or appear to be, they may have been joined together through a partialization by deed, then if those lots are legal lots, then you could put a structure on that lot. And those would tend to be much larger than the 3,750 square feet that you find in the more inner neighborhoods. So, if the zoning was RS 20, you probably... If you have an acre, you've got two legal lots and you could subdivide that property into two lots now.
I see. Yeah. Okay. That's all I've got.
Judy?
No comment except just to say that... So, these lots are grandfathered in based on...
The time that they were platted.
The time that they were platted and we are here today to honor that. Is that what it is?
These lots could... You could get a building permit for them now. And what this text amendment does is try to make a better fit of the structure that you would put on these smaller lots than what you currently could do.
Well, you know, the carrot of what's going up really doesn't fit the neighborhood there. And I know the structures that the gentleman talked about in North Nashville there, and I don't like those either, but this is a legal move for the applicant.
That's correct.
Thank you.
We're talking about the inside of the house, but what about the outside also? Am I correct that after, if we changed this, didn't there would be three feet on each side of a structure if you had a series of these lots in a row? So, you'd have just six feet in between the structures?
That's correct. That with... You would have to be three feet off the property line. But if the house beside you was on a lot that was conforming, they would have to meet the setbacks of that zoning district.
Okay. All right. Are there a lot of homes in the county that only have six feet or less between them?
If they have RS 3.75 zoning district, then they might be. Or in an SP, under a PUD, in certain PUDs where they might have had... The PUD would have allowed them to be closer together. I can't tell you how many houses there are in the county that are six feet apart.
Okay. Well, the only reason I bring this up, I think there's some wiggle room here and that very honestly, if the applicant would allow, I think it'd be good to defer until after the community meeting to see unless there's some crucial thing of building a house or something. At this time of year, it probably is not as important, but I would really like to have it deferred and then come back to us.
The planning department is actually the applicant in this case.
Councilman?
So, on a 7.5-zoned lot, what's the side setback?
It's...
Conforming lot?
It's five feet.
Okay. So, you'd have eight feet between the two houses theoretically then?
That's correct.
As opposed to...
10 feet.
10 feet. Okay. I just... If we keep talking about the height thing, and so if it were, you know, if you've got a two-story house on each side of one of these, then it would make sense to allow a two-story house. If you had a three-story house on each side, then it would fit... If you had a one-story house on each side, then it would seem to make sense to let it be a one-story. So, I'm just wondering if we defer, that would give time to look at some considerations for heights guidelines that would make these houses fit more in the context of the block that they're going into? Is that reasonable?
Yeah. No, I don't have any problem with it. I just... I don't want people to leave thinking... I mean, I think that coming up with a solution has got to be more universal because the problems that we have today are built under the way the laws are today. So, if you don't do anything, you're just going to get more of what you have today. And it would have to be worded in a way where... I mean, this was done in order to try to lower or narrow the... Lower the height of the units. And we just need to kind of think through and make sure that whatever's done will actually achieve that and that you couldn't continue to use what we have today and still go up and build the same way you have today. It's just... The complaints are all about what's done today. And so, the argument is, well, let's not change it, but we have the problem today. So, we just need... It's a much more complicated solution. We need to... We can look at it and bring something back. It's just I don't... I don't want people to think that there's really an easy solution to this.
So, if we deferred for, say, one meeting to allow for this community meeting to take place, would that leave enough... Would that be enough time for the staff to take a look at...
I don't think one meeting would be. I mean, I'm not sure that there's a tremendous hurry about it. I'd really rather wait... I mean, I'd rather give us plenty of time. I'd go two months out on this because, I mean, the issue... The contextual issue really has to be talked through. And it's exactly what you talked about in terms of kind of the context of the street. It might not be the context directly of the houses next door to them, but the height will be controlled to some degree by the context of the buildings around them. And we've done research and proposed things before where you looked at the whole block face and tried to get an average height or a maximum height or something like that. But I just... Those, when you begin to apply them universally, are not things that the council historically has wanted to go along with. So, it's just...
Okay. So, then I would like to move to defer this to the second meeting in March.
Second? We moved it seconded. Time for discussion. Everybody turn your mics on. Greg?
Well, and, you know, I understand where we're going. I think the important piece of this too is, on the opposite side, we don't want to diminish our efforts for infill. I mean, this commission has been on record several times that, you know, we want infill and, you know, I think that's important when you're trying to develop a progressive urban area. And so, I think that we don't want to hurt development in infill. So, you know, that would be my only concern with some of the comments being made is that we make it too restrictive that nobody wants to build there. And so, I understand the issue, but that's one of the things I want to point out is I don't think that we need to leave our... What this commission has been about, which is infill and development in, you know, urban downtown and making Nashville a progressive city.
I don't think that we're sending that message by deferral vote. I think we're sending a message that we want to bring forth the best piece of legislation that the council can consider to address the problem in a as universal a way as we can at this particular time and not just start with one thing and then amend it six months from now or a year from now, but try to at least have a product from the beginning that's as good as we can get it and leaving a little time for some study and input. I don't think we're sending a negative message.
Andre?
Could you show us the slide that had the two lots compared to... Show the overall footprint? Did I understand... I think I heard you say that the one on the left, which is what we would be voting on, would be a... The footprint could be as large as 2,000 square feet?
That's correct. In this particular image, that's what it is. It's using about 55% of the... It's 55% building coverage. The other one is around 44% building coverage. I don't know that someone would want to build a house this long and narrow, but what it was just trying to demonstrate, four feet doesn't sound like a lot of space, but it can mean a lot of space when you're looking at the overall floor print and what you could fit in there, so you wouldn't need to go as high.
Well, I was just responding to one of the comments that somebody said that they have larger, single-family homes. And if that were only a two-story house, it'd be 4,000 square feet.
That's correct.
Which is, I don't know, in my opinion, substantial. It's a pretty big house. And that seems like overall, from the use, it might fit with the scale and the proportion of the neighborhood. I just think... I just want to plant that seed while we're... If we're deferring, that we could consider that.
Okay. We're still discussing. I guess I'd just like to speak on the idea that this is a good thing to bring forward. We have a situation where this builder and others can go right ahead for the next two months, of course, and build them narrower. So, I don't see why there would be a problem with deferring, but we... If we think it would be better to have a little more space, then we don't want to defer too long. I actually believe in the principles of urban neighborhoods of being... Of having a product that is close together for people who choose to do that. I live in a house that's about seven or eight feet from my next-door neighbor, the actual house. It's fine with me. I knew what I was buying, of course, when I bought it. So, I do think we need a whole lot of different products for people to choose from and we need to do that with sensitivity to what's already there too. So, I'm happy about the deferral. Seems like we've had some good discussion of it. Are you ready to vote?
Would you rather defer it for less?
No. I... Hunter?
Yeah. I guess what I'd like to see, especially if we defer it, are some real examples of what the problem is. We really sort of just heard kind of the problem defined by one of our speakers. And I don't know if we're getting 15-foot-wide, three-story homes out there. I haven't seen any, but maybe that's the problem. So, I would like to see some real examples or at least potential of what...
I do actually have some that were supplied by the developer and these are, I believe, from Salem Town.
There you go.
Now you understand.
Right. But what we understand, I think, is why you should want something like this bill to lower that.
I'm not sure where these were taken. As I said, it was the developer who spoke who took these pictures and sent them to me as examples.
And so, the idea here is that, of course, by getting a bigger footprint, you could potentially lower the height. Though there's nothing in this legislation that would require you to lower the height.
Which was Councilman Holloman's point, I think.
And perhaps Councilman Claiborne's point as well.
Okay. And you should also know that this is what could be built today. We're not proposing that this is what is to be built. This is what you could do today. You could get your building permit and this meets the requirements of this zoning district for... So, this can be built today, this product.
The zoning district where it is.
That's right. Where it is. I'm not sure where this is, so I can't tell you what the zoning district is, but...
Sixth Avenue North.
Sixth Avenue North. This house would meet the zoning stand... The standards of that zoning district. That's why it's got a building permit.
All right. I think it's...
Sorry. I have one other question just to clarify. Could you go back to the bulk standards? And this is where I was a little confused earlier. But if you had a RS 7.5 piece of property that was 6,000 square feet, your side setback's not going to change?
They're not because you would go to the RS 5 zoning district and so essentially yours... You would stay the same.
So, we're really only talking about those that are less than 5,000 square feet. Perhaps if you had one in, you know, in the RS 15 that was 13,000 square feet, it could apply to those as well, but it's... Okay. Well, that's helpful too.
We're about to vote. I have had a request to add one brief comment by the... One of the presenters earlier. With your permission, I'll let that happen as long as it's very quick.
I would just... All about deferment and I would send in those pictures because that's... I believe we should have a height cap. I've actually got pictures of some other structures. I've actually got pictures of some other structures. These are the ones that I built, not those. Go back.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went too far.
That's what I built in the nations, or historic West Town, whatever you want to call it.
Not, not the ones on Sixth Avenue?
No, no, I didn't build those. I wouldn't build those.
All right, thank you.
But what I was going to say is, I've got lots that I'm currently holding that I can't continue to hold for six months, that if, I mean, if I have to pull the trigger, I have to pull the trigger and build them 15 feet wide. If we defer this thing and it takes eight months to go through council, then I'll have to build some more 15-foot-wide houses. I hate to do that.
Right. I don't think we're talking about that kind of delay at all, but, thank you, appreciate it. Um, there's a motion and a second that we defer for two months.
Two months?
Two months. I mean, that's what Rick suggested. Was that...
Second, second, second meeting.
Okay. The motion is to the second meeting in March.
Sorry, I just want to clarify what we're asking the staff to do if we do defer this, because if we come back in two months with a very comprehensive bill that addresses contextual issues, there very well could be a long, a long delay, because we've run into this before. And so I don't know if there's options of how we could address this in two months with one bill or the other, or, you know, can we look at both at the same time, or, or is there a sort of a simple version to be the quick fix, like we've looked at today versus the more contextual, much more comprehensive, it's going to require a lot more input and probably more political as well?
Let us defer it for one month and let us try to bring something back that's narrow on it, with the understanding that it's not going to deal with all the issues that people are going to, that people want to deal with.
Hey, Rick, I would prefer if we, maybe we just focus it with height, maybe.
All right. We need to move on. I think we've had some good discussion, and with your permission, is that all right? Make the motion that we make it...
Yes, I will withdraw my motion to defer until the second meeting in March to the second meeting in February.
All right.
Second.
Heard the motion and the second. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, vote no. Thank you. Our next item is number seven. So I'd like to ask proponents to come forward of item number seven, Woodmont Estates.
We're going to do a fan presentation.
I'm sorry, the proponents don't get to come forward. I'm, I'm new at this. And I'll, I'll remind everybody at the beginning, whichever side you're on, it is much more effective, and in our rules, that you are not allowed to repeat what other people are saying. Add to, but don't feel like there is a need for us to hear many times the same testimony, and that's, that's for both sides. But first, we'll hear from the staff, and please don't repeat yourself.
Commissioners, this is item number seven. It's the Woodmont Estates Concept Plan. It's a, again, it's a concept plan request for five lots. Staff recommends approval with conditions. The site is on Woodmont, at the corner of Woodmont and Estes, about three-quarters of a mile from Harding Pike. Just to go over what a concept plan is for review, a concept plan is basically a master plan of a subdivision to show the layout of streets, lots and open space, any public dedications or any changes on the lot for environmental features. The concept plan is the first of three steps in a subdivision. The next two are the development plan and the final plat. The development plan basically lays out the infrastructure, the required infrastructure on the site, and shows the construction details for that infrastructure. And the final plat is what records the subdivision legally. And the concept plan must be reviewed by the planning commission. If it's, if it's approved, the development plan and the plat, the final plat, the last two steps can be approved administratively by staff unless the commission decides that they'd like to have those, review those as well. A concept plan is reviewed a little bit differently from a zone change. There are a few differences. In a concept plan with a subdivision, the commission makes the final decision. It doesn't go on to council. It isn't a recommendation to council. The review for a concept plan is based on the subdivision regulations and the zoning code and policy. It plays a more of a minor role in subdivisions, and in this case, applies really only in terms of the density of the proposed subdivision. The existing zoning is R-20. It's a residential zoning, allowing for single and two-family residential. The current zoning would allow a detached duplex on each of the two existing lots for a total of four dwellings, and based on the area of these two lots, the zoning could permit up to seven lots within the subdivision. And five lots, again, are proposed with this subdivision. The policy is residential, low, medium. Again, that's also a residential policy with a maximum density of four dwelling units per acre. The proposed subdivision would be considered an infill subdivision by the, by the subdivision regulations. So the policy does play a role, but again, only in terms of the density. The density of this proposed subdivision is, is just under two dwelling units per acre, so it would be within the range of the RLM policy. And the community character elements of the, of the, of the subdivision regulations really don't play a role with the, under the RLM land use policy. Here's the layout of the subdivision. Again, it's five lots with four lots along Woodmont Boulevard, facing Woodlot Boulevard, Woodmont Boulevard. The fifth lot would face Estes Road, and Lot 5 is a duplex lot, is proposed as a duplex lot. There's one existing dwelling on this site that the, that's shown on this concept plan as, as two remain. There are two open space areas also within the concept plan. Access to the site would be taken from two different, from two locations, one along Woodmont Boulevard, where there's a current, where there's currently a driveway entrance, and this would be a joint access easement that would provide access to lots three and four. Another access would come from Estes Road and would provide access to lots one, two, and five. The applicant, this is actually a, a different plan from the one that's in your staff report. It was revised earlier this week, and one of the changes was to the, there are two basic, basic changes. One was to the, the layout of the open spaces. They just changed a little bit. But the other one was to the required minimum building setbacks on the plat for lots one, two, three, and four. The change was made in order to try to step back the setback lines to try to be consistent with the existing dwellings on either side. You can see, here's the outline of the dwelling to the west, and then these setbacks would step back, and then to try to be consistent as, you can see this dwelling to the east is set back quite a bit farther, but to just try to maintain consistency with that. And you can see, here's an aerial showing larger context, and you can see the, the two lots outlined in red, and the shorter setback of the houses to the west, and then the deeper setback generally of the, of the dwellings to the east. And you can also see some of the surrounding context. There are also four lots across the street on Woodmont, so the lots proposed in this subdivision would have a similar width to those lots across the street. The, the, here's an image of the original submittal from November of 2012. The applicant has gone through many revisions since then. You can see this first one was a, a cluster lot subdivision with nine lots, and cluster lot just means that not all of the original lots met the R-20 zoning. They weren't all more than 20,000 square feet. And there was a, a road, a public road, a public street that was, that was proposed at one point. And then a revised plan was submitted. Staff worked with the applicant. This was, this is when it started to take its current form with four lots along Woodmont Boulevard, and the layout was changed to have more of the lots facing the public streets. And then with the, with the current, you can, you can see there's also one lot at the south, an additional lot with the subdivision, and that one with the latest revision was removed. So the entire subdivision area was, was, was reduced, and now all of the lots meet the zoning in terms of square footage. They're all larger than 20,000 square feet. And staff recommends, just to close, staff recommends approval with conditions. The plan is consistent with the subdivision regulations and the zoning code, and with conditions, it will meet the requirements of all the other metro departments. There are three additional conditions that will need to be added to this recommendation. The first two are related to the fire department. Fire flow shall meet the requirements of the International Fire Code, the 2006 edition. The second, the areas labeled as open space shall not be buildable lots. Existing buildings in open space shall be moved or removed. And the third is that vehicular access to the site shall be limited to those shared access easements shown on the plan. And that...
Yes, just remember, before we open the public hearing, we might have a question or two for you.
Yeah, you mentioned that the community character does not play a role under this RLM. Can you just elaborate on that?
There, there's a, in the, in the infill subdivision regulations, in the subdivision regulations, there are, there are, there's an area that talks about how policy applies to a subdivision, and it's basically in two things. It's density and community character, and community character talks about the, generally the frontage length and the size of the lots and how they compare to the lots around them. And for RLM, you know, that's, that, the community character is meant to apply in certain policy, with certain policy types, but with RLM, the community character, the subdivision regulations say that with RLM and other low-density policy types, it's that subdivision regulations just consider the density of the proposed subdivision and not necessarily the size and shape of the lots that are proposed.
Yes. Hunter?
I just wanted to ask Greg if he could go back to the slide that talks about sort of our responsibility as a commission with subdivision regulations and what we are to consider, and, and based on, I think, the next slide. The review is based on subdivision regulations and zoning code. I just want to clarify for the commissioners, but also for the public. If we find that this meets the, all the regulations of the both subdivision regulations and zoning code, are, is there any, do we really have an option as far, and this may be a question for, for our legal counsel, do we really even have an option in terms of, or, you know, if we wanted to, if, if there was a desire to disapprove this for whatever reason, we would need either a subdivision regulation or a part of the zoning ordinance to support that?
That's exactly correct. The subdivision regulations provide that the commission shall state the specific reasons for disapproving, if it is disapproved. And then the subdivision's regulations also state that what your review is going to entail is, does it meet the requirements of the code? Does it meet the requirements of the subdivision regulations? Given that, whether or not you believe it's appropriate, given whether you believe it meets those two prongs. And if it doesn't, then you need to state in terms of those prongs what your, the basis for your disapproval is, according to the regs.
Yeah, this one, you function in a, in a ministerial role, where you're just basically reviewing it for consistency with the requirements, not a policy role.
We, before, again, before we hear from the public, do you have a slide that shows a little bit more about Woodmont as it goes, a little broader view of Woodmont that we could put it in, that goes further toward Hillsborough? Other things on, on the east side of Estes?
This is the most zoomed-out slide that I, that's in, that we have in the slideshow.
Okay. And just to, another clarification...
I was going to say, we, while this is going on, we could pull up an aerial, yeah.
Maybe we should do that. I guess that, that we don't have a lot of contested subdivision hearings these days, and, and some of us haven't heard many for several years. I thought that, I, I had not remembered the business about the infill. Is there not language, general language of subdivision rights that does speak in some terms about compatibility and consistency?
Within the, within the first part of the subdivision regulations, there is some language about the purpose of the subdivision regulations, saying that the purpose is to provide or allow harmonious development within, within the county. So there is some language about, some general language in the subdivision regulations about, I guess, general consistency.
Okay. Thanks. We're going to wait and see if we can pull this up.
We've been provided with the zoning exact description of what is allowed, the 20,000 square feet, 2.31 dwelling acres, 25% duplex lots. What are the, is there, is there the subdivision rules that are that second prong that we're supposed to meet? Are there certain steps that we need to be aware of or think about to apply to this that's in front of us, or that you could provide us?
Well, are you ready with the map?
I've got it.
Let's, let's...
Okay. Well, I don't know. He's on.
Or we could, our legal staff could address that, perhaps?
Okay.
Okay. Legal staff, right.
So...
Well, it's a good idea. We are going to have a public hearing. Don't, don't, we are just getting some things out before the public hearing.
When I ask the question while we're waiting then, so because this is a concept plan, then we haven't had to do the traffic impact study yet, is that correct? No.
It's not a requirement.
It's not required.
Unless for a small bill.
Because it's a...
Basically, they're not, the issue is they're not trying to change the intensity that they're allowed. Not a traffic impact. You know, there may be access issues, but not the traffic impact.
Well, I think we can, we can come back to this if we, if we want to see this after the public hearing. There's probably no reason to wait at this point. So I'll declare the public hearing open, and the applicant gets up to 10 minutes, and you can reserve part of that. And then we will have, hear from both sides after that. Are you ready to present? Okay, state your name and tell us if you want to reserve some of the time for rebuttal.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Clifton, members of the planning commission staff. I'm Rick Murfree of the Law Firm of Murfree, Murfree. I represent the applicant, Mr. Artvin Afrotte. We would like to reserve any additional time we have for rebuttal. Just briefly, tonight, we're requesting the approval of a five-lot subdivision on 3.35 acres on the corner of Woodmont Boulevard and Estes Road. Originally, my client had requested an eight-lot subdivision. However, over the past few months, planning staff and the neighbors have objected to that, and we've worked with planning staff and the neighbors and have reduced that request from eight lots to, to five. One thing also to point out is, one of these five lots is the existing Tudor home on the property. So what we're talking about is really the addition of, of four units versus, you know, five units, because there is an existing home there. My client is committed to making this development something that y'all will be proud of. He's committed to making it consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods and wants to integrate it into the existing community. A couple of the commitments that he's made through this plan and are that he's going to preserve the existing Tudor home, which I think everybody can agree is a beautiful home. It's the Bell House, I guess, is what it's, it's called. The historic stone wall that runs around the perimeter of the property, particularly along Woodmont, would be preserved, because we feel like that's a feature, not only that has historic value, but also adds aesthetic value and also helps with the, the value of the, of the properties he's selling. There'll be an effort to preserve any trees on the property. Now, some may have to be cut down because they're diseased or they're under the footprint of a, of a house that's proposed, but other than that, to the extent they can, they'll, they'll preserve the existing trees on, on the site. Another thing that they've agreed to do is, there's a half-acre common area that's sort of in the southeast of the track. That common area has a grove of trees. It's going to be a, a green space, one of which is several hundred-year-old oak tree. My client just felt like it wasn't something that needed to be cut down and felt like that would be a good area to have a common area, a green space, and also to preserve this, this grove of, of old-growth trees. My client, my client's going to place design guidelines and restrictive covenants on these properties. The last thing he wants to have happen is somebody to build something on an adjoining lot that he sold that, that reduces the value of his property. So he's going to put together stringent guidelines, which will help shape the design and, and the criterias that are, that are placed on the properties and help keep that consistency with the existing neighborhoods that surround. A couple of concerns that were expressed by the neighbors, which we, one of which is, is the size of these lots compared to the neighboring lots that have existing homes. One thing I thought I might want to point out is, the proposed lots on Estes are going to be 20,000 to 30,000 square feet. The neighboring lots across from Estes are zoned R-10, which allows 10,000 square-foot lots. These lots are considerably smaller than what's being proposed, and frankly, the houses are considerably smaller than what's being proposed. And they're beautiful homes, but I, I think that argument kind of is a, is a, you know, isn't very accurate, because what we're going to have is bigger lots and bigger houses than the adjoining properties. Same thing on Woodmont.
Excuse me, the adjoining properties, where exactly?
Across, across Estes.
Across Woodmont and across Estes.
Across Estes. And then across Woodmont, the houses are zoned R-15, which is 15,000 square-foot lots. What we would propose for the properties in question are 20,000 square-foot lots, which were going to be considerably larger than the tracks across the street as well. The one lot... The one lot that is gonna be larger than the lots we're proposing is the Needlemeyer property, which is, I believe, to the, to the south. It's a fairly large lot. Having looked at it, it looks like at one point it might have been the combination of two lots that were built there. But if you, if you come from that track and go down Woodmont, the lots get smaller and are gonna be considerably smaller than the lots that we are proposing. Traffic was a concern, and frankly, it's a five-lot subdivision, it's not gonna have a lot of traffic count. And we are just proposing one entrance and exit on Woodmont, and that's existing driveway that's there. It's gonna be used as a joint drive for the two houses that are gonna have access on Woodmont. So you're not gonna have additional curb cuts or additional driveways coming onto Woodmont. The rest of the properties would be served off of Estes. Just a couple other quick things. As was discussed, we've agreed to push the setbacks on the properties fronting Woodmont back. These setbacks would be 100 feet, 125 feet, and 140 feet, respectively. The base requirement would have been 80 feet, but as an accommodation to the neighbors, my client has agreed to push them back. Now, the house that's existing, the Tudor home, will stay where it is, but it's considerably off the road as well. I guess in closing, I'd just like to point out that, you know, this is not a rezoning. This is the consideration of a plan. It's more like, more like a subdivision plat, or something along those lines. I realize here that y'all call them, call them something different than we do in Rutherford County, but it's a, it's a proposed plan, and it's, it's one of those things that if we meet the requirements, which staff feels like we do, that it should get an upvote, and it shouldn't be political, and the nature of these kinds of approvals are, they're not political. It's, you meet the criteria or you don't, and we feel like we meet the criteria, and so does staff, and so we're asking for your approval. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you wish, you'll have 2 minutes and 43 seconds. 2 minutes.
In the morning, you just get 2 minutes to rebuttal.
Oh, well, okay, we have. Our rules. Thank you. Are there any other speakers in favor of the development, of the proposal?
Good evening. My name's Kevin Estes with Dewey Estes Engineering. I'm the engineer on this. Mr. Murphy and Mr. Johnson spoke about everything just about, so I'm gonna be brief and just say, I appreciate the staff working with us.
Let you know that anytime you have, that you take those against the rebuttal time.
I'll be very quick.
Okay.
We had 2:43, so can I get the 43 seconds?
Yeah, no, it gets up to 2. Let them speak.
I'm gonna speak just about two things real quick. One, I'd like to thank the staff and the neighbors. We had a neighborhood meeting, and now that neighborhood meeting, we probably did very little that they wanted, but we did as much as we could to meet the regulations and meet their concerns. And second, I'm just gonna say that we have a recommendation from stormwater. I know that'd be a very large concern, but we are providing pervious pavement, rain gardens, and a detention area to meet the requirements, so meet all the regulations. I'll stop speaking, and I'll thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor of this? Those opposed, if you'll come forward, and you have up to 2 minutes each, and I would encourage you to, to not make the same points over and over. Please give us your name as you're speaking.
Good evening. My name's Virginia Williams. I live at 3717 Woodmont Boulevard, and I've shared a property line with the Bells for 26 years. I was shocked and surprised, surprised, to find out that the property next door could be subdivided in the way it is. I don't think that was the zoning when I bought this property 60 years, 26 years ago. And I was surprised that not only their home, but my home and many homes down the road were under the same thing. So I became familiar with the Green Hills Midtown Plan, and have come to understand that there's an idea of increasing density for a small part of the stretch of Woodmont. Woodmont, like any artery, is a long street. It has different character. The character of our stretch between Estes and Hillsborough Road was started a long time before a lot of the others, because of the way historically farms were subdivided. There were properties, the Bells, my home, the home across the street, the Forbes' home, were developed very early on, in the mid-'20s. Same thing happened at the other end, on Hillsborough Road. Those properties were developed, and then it began to fill in over the next decade or so. But this is a stretch of homes that have, are pre-war, that have survived through, and not only survived, they have thrived. They pretty much exist as they did at the time they were built, with long lots, with small building-to-lot ratios. Historically, revival homes. The pictures I show you, you see the Bell home, you see my home next door, built by the same builder within a couple of years of each other, have existed side by side for almost 100 years. So I am appalled that there's an idea to put in new homes in front of our old homes. We don't want this. Neighbors don't want this. People in Green Hills don't want this. I hope you can consider our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. We would like for people to line up. Not everybody, but just so we have a continuous flow. But come, come on. Give us your name.
My name is Chris Champion. I live on Dartmouth, one of the smaller homes across from where they're planning on building these. I've been there since 2005. Since then, we've had three substantial flooding events, along with unbelievable amount of sleepless nights, watching the creek, Sugar Tree Creek, which sits behind our property, rise out of its banks, coming awfully close to our home. In my opinion, in the seven years or so since we've lived there, the runoff has gotten worse. It's entirely runoff. It's not a constantly running creek. It's runoff from Green Hills. The engineer mentioned that they've met all the requirements of stormwater, but I'm sure Hill Place also met all the requirements of stormwater. And you can't ask anyone in Green Hills, that runoff has gotten so, you watch the, at the creek at the Y MCA in Green Hills, and you watch how that water just, it goes up so quickly after a hard rain. It's gotten substantially worse as the years have gone on. My neighbors and I have been repeatedly rebuffed by Metro when discussing improvements to the creek. For example, repairing walls that have fallen in the creek, dealing with the cement bed that was done at some point in the '40s, I believe, improvements to Woodmont Lane Bridge. And we've been told, well, you bought in a floodway, deal with it, basically. Those weren't the exact words, but that's basically what they said. And my, you know, I understand that improving the situation may not be a possibility, but I think we could all agree that making it worse doesn't make sense. And so that is exactly what I feel like a development like this would do. You know, my fourth graders and I have been studying runoff and discussing, you know, when you decrease the amount of permeable surfaces, you increase runoff, and that, where's that water gonna go? It's gonna go into Sugar Tree Creek, which is already overburdened. Did I mention that it has a cement bed? So I just, I implore upon you to, you know, to vote this down, or disapprove of this, or whatever the terminology is. This is my first time. But, you know, it's just, it's just not a good idea. It's just not.
Thank you.
Susan Bryley. I live at 3800 Dartmouth. I live on the opposite side of Dartmouth. I'm on the north side from the previous speaker. I wanna give a little bit different take on the flooding concern. The developer has said that they might build a retention pond and use some permeable concrete, but that just means that the water is gonna run off the houses, off the driveways, into the aquifer. On the north side of Dartmouth, which is the opposite of him, our houses flood from wet weather springs, which come up from the aquifer, which is gonna be yet more loaded onto, once they build these houses. And the runoff is, we don't flood from Sugar Tree Creek. On my side of the street, we flood from the, from the ground up in our basements. The other thing that I'd like to mention is the traffic issue. I live, I wish I had a pointer, but I live right there at the corner of Dartmouth and Estes, and the turn lane starts right at my, where I would turn off of Dartmouth and then go north on Estes. The proposed driveway is going to come right out into the turn lane. So you're gonna have people turning right and left into a turn lane, and across the turn lane to turn left, and then they're gonna be going right by Dartmouth and Estes, which I feel is going to create a real potential for car accidents. Despite their low volume that they propose, there's still gonna be people trying to turn left across that turn lane, and it's already a bottleneck right now. When I try to turn left off of Dartmouth onto Estes in the morning, it takes me quite a while, as it does everybody who's trying to come out of Dartmouth. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Cooper. I live on Tremble Road. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns. As a resident of Green Hills, I feel this request is not in keeping with the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan. When last updated in 2005, those many residents who took part in that process stated they did not want single-family properties to be converted to duplexes and multifamily homes. I believe serious consideration should be given to our community plan and the residents that live in this neighborhood. If approved, this plan will greatly change the character and charm of this neighborhood. It sets a dangerous precedent for future requests of this type, not only in Green Hills, but across Nashville. Green Hills is already overcrowded. The large lots and single homes are what attracted high-end buyers to this area. Subdivision plans like this keep chipping away at our wonderful neighborhoods. Developers come in to make a quick buck, then are gone, leaving the longtime residents to deal with the consequences. After all, it is the character, charm, and spacious lots that attracted current residents, not the changes that developers are trying to make. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leslie Sitten, and I live at 3818 Dartmouth, which is the corner of Dartmouth and Woodmont Lane. And I just wanna say that, as, I live on the Woodmont side of Dartmouth, so when it rains significantly, when we flooded in 2010, we flooded from Woodmont. We didn't, yes, Sugar Tree Creek flooded, but our big thing was from Woodmont. And when we evacuated our house with our three, with our children out of four feet of water, I mean, that just makes me think, now we're gonna add more concrete, so now we're gonna have more runoff, and now we're gonna have more water. I just don't think this is a good idea. I think the traffic already, we're already a cut-through, and like I said, I have three small kids, so traffic coming down Dartmouth, coming down Woodmont Lane, I mean, we're just right there in the middle of it, and I just don't think this is a good idea. And I really appreciate a no vote. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Margot Chambers, and I live at 3803 Princeton Avenue in Nashville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like you to disapprove this applicant's concept plan, because the sidewalk plan has not been outlined to the neighbors. It's a critical point, because sidewalk placement may not happen, it may be substandard, or it may require a zoning ordinance in order to make the sidewalk ADA compliant. This is due to the footprint maximized in the current plans. I'd like to request that prior to approval of this concept plan, that the sidewalks be made ADA compliant, that this plan comply with the Historical Preservation Act, Section 106, in regards to the fence. It complies with the U.S. DOT Section 4F, in regards to Woodmont technically being an extension of Bryley Parkway. This is on the corner of a very busy intersection in Green Hills, so it's important to have adequate and reasonable sidewalks for all citizens, the very young, the very old, and those living with physical challenges. There's a stone-stacked fence along the two roads, Woodmont and Estes. I'm concerned there is not enough room for ADA-compliant sidewalks. I don't agree with this commission's official determination of this part of town, but if this commission insists on this land-use definition, then the community demands the sidewalk amenities that comes along with it. We'd also like the streetscape improvements prior to the concept plan being approved. Please finalize the exact sidewalk placement, meeting all codes for ADA compliance, as well as Historical Preservation, Section 106, U.S. DOT, Section 4F, before you approve it. I would appreciate you disapprove this applicant. We've received notice that Councilman McGuire has also submitted a quest to disapprove, and we'd like you to honor that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Pennington, Wood Lawn Drive. I'd like to ask you to look at the, pick the diagram you got with the footprints of the houses on them. Can we show that on the screen?
Is that what was presented by this man?
Would have been Mrs. Needlemeyer brought them, sent them.
Could you stop that for just a second?
It's in your packet that was handed out.
Okay, we don't have them for the screen, but we do all have them in front of us.
Okay, if you, first of all, the lot sizes, while they are technically legal, are gonna have bigger footprints on them than most of the rest of the neighborhood percentage-wise. Again, it's still legal, but it's very out of keeping with the placement of this whole thing. Also, those two houses, as she mentioned, were built sort of together, and one of the new houses is gonna be right between the two, facing the Needlemeyer's house. Just because it has a front door on the short side, as does the house on Lot 1, as do the duplexes, doesn't really mean that it's oriented toward Woodmont. And on an arterial, they need to be oriented toward the arterial. Also, the distance between the structures is much smaller than the rest of the neighborhood, and this is significant, goes back to the flooding and everything else. Now, the floodplain that was shown earlier, if you look at the Green Hills Community Plan, it shows not just a floodplain, but the wildly unstable soil that is around in that area. So that's been underplayed a little bit. And in the Community Character Manual on page, pages 20 and 21, describing the neighborhood and development in the neighborhood, whose characteristics typically include larger lots, deeper setbacks, generous spacing between homes, et cetera. That's not what we're getting here. We're getting cramp, 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 bigger house, smaller lot. Then on page 21, Building Placement Scale, Mass, Orientation. Buildings are oriented with the main entrance facing the street, generous spacing between structures, and on and on. Again, with the front door on the short side, it's kind of not in the spirit of things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carlette Forbes. Please excuse my scratching voice. As again, my name is Carlette Forbes. My husband and I live at 3912 Woodmont Boulevard, across the street from the Bells. We've lived there for over 20 years. We, like others, chose to live on Woodmont for the beautiful pre-war homes, the sweeping lawns, and majestic 100-year-old trees. We, like most of our neighbors, have worked hard to maintain our property consistent with the integrity of our neighborhood, as the Bells have done. In fact, they were able to have the stone fence that you heard about surrounding their property put on the historic register. Historic, that is what this discussion is about. Woodmont Boulevard between Estes and Hillsborough Road is a historic area. That demands to be preserved and cherished for generations to come, allowing Nashville to be the diverse, beautiful city that we all want it to be. We strongly oppose this plan and request that you deny it. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jimbo Cook, James Cook. I live at 3804 Dartmouth Avenue. And I was never informed of any community meeting, number one. I was never contacted in any way. I didn't get an email on it, or a call, or letter, or anything. Number two, looking at this plan, I've been in the commercial real estate business for close to 40 years, and I'm definitely pro-growth. I'm definitely pro-development. I'm definitely for everybody making some money too, as far as entrepreneurship. But the, a couple things, the access points are kinda comical. The one on Estes is, that's, that's just, that's, I don't know, can't describe the words to put, to put to that one. But my main concern is the flooding, which has been, and I'm not gonna repeat it, but there's a development across Woodmont that, from the asphalt coming from the historic flood, all the water drained across Woodmont and on into, into the creek. And the same thing is gonna apply here. Now, I'm on one of the houses that floods from the Now, I'm on one of the houses that floods from the bottom up. Across the street, up against the creek, we had, I think, three houses destroyed, rebuilt, and a couple of them was lifted up. And I think any more of these type of deal about the concrete and the way it flows, I'd have to see some sort of something to where it's not going to exacerbate the flooding problems over there, in my opinion. But I also think the access point, and would like to know why I wasn't contacted about this development. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello. My name's Clay Bailey. I am Jimbo's next-door neighbor at 3806 Dartmouth. And I think that was a broader pattern. None of us were contacted, at least none of us who I've spoken to this afternoon, received any information about the meeting, much less this plan. So I'm not going to rehash what others have said. But I think this flood issue was overlooked in the earlier stages of this process, and I hope that there's some way that we can go back and consider that as a criteria, because I think in light of recent events, particularly the 2010 flood, it shows that that's an essential role for government to step up and be proactive on that issue before we get the next one. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Belleau Newton, Wood Lawn Drive. First of all, I really sincerely thank you for your hard work. I'm sure it's not an easy job. I'm not going to repeat what's been said. I'm actually here to prevail on you, to ask you, how do citizens prevail? Staff has approved this, Stormwater's approved it, Fire's approved it, all with conditions. But guess who hasn't approved it? The neighbors. Those of us who live there. Those who, like Stuart, knew what they were buying into. This is not urban downtown. This is residential Woodmont. The street is very different. This is not even Woodmont near Harding. It's go from Estes to Hillsborough. But again, I ask you, we participate in the community meetings, we went to the Community Character Manual meetings, we were T-3. Now to be told, well, that really doesn't count. I say it does count. We told you what we wanted then, we're telling you what we want now. We're begging you to listen and hear us, hear the citizens. And although these people can do this, it's not necessarily what you can do that's the right thing. We're here to ask you to please do the right thing and deny this. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Piggott. I also want to thank you, and I'm here representing also my husband, Mike Piggott, who unfortunately got the flu this week, and he wishes he could be here. We live next to the Niedermeyers at 3713 Woodmont Boulevard. And I echo the sentiments of all the other people who've spoken so well. But also, I was very surprised to learn that our lot, which I thought was RS40, had been changed to R20, and duplexes are allowed on our side of the street. We don't recall getting any notice about this happening, any kind of individual notice. And my husband's very good about being up on everything that happens in the newspaper. So I was very disappointed to learn that, and to learn that because of that change that we didn't even know about, now this sort of thing can apparently legally happen. I also want to talk about these houses, and this is following up on what Virginia Williams said, these are landmark homes. I'm an architect, and I study this all the time. Those two stone homes are landmark homes. And I feel like to pepper them with newer things, even though they may have some design guidelines put in place, is just a shame to those homes. And one thing about the design guidelines, which they said, you know, they were nice to say that they would do, you know, I would like to see what they are, you know? They might be that you can't have, you know, there's a lot of variation that can happen there in these design guidelines. I would love to see what's put in place for those, so that the character of these homes are kept. And one other thing, I've learned that from Hilldale on down Woodmont, that area has gotten protected. That area was built after our homes. We were built in the '20s, and I do not understand why we weren't included in that protected area. Thank you very much.
Hi. I'm Mary Pillow Thompson. I live at 3802 Woodmont Lane. And other people before me have said it much better, but I just want to let you know it's another voice that we just, the neighbors do not want this. I think it's just going to be ugly. I mean, there's no other better way. I think that's what everybody is trying to say, that aside from just the flood issues, that it, I don't go and visit cities and leave and say, wow, they have a lot of great subdivisions. And I don't think that we want Nashville to be a city like that. It's a wonderful stretch of street, and it needs to be preserved as such. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us speak. I'm glad I live in the United States. My name's Deborah Tabor. I live at 3910 Woodmont Boulevard. I've been a neighbor of the Bells for over 20 years, and I have selfishly enjoyed the Hawks, seen them fly over that beautiful private green space, which I am sad to see is possibly going to be eradicated. I'm sorry to repeat this, but the flooding is a definite issue. I was across from the Bells, not close to the spring at all. The water came up, we had major flooding damage. You will not believe the damage we had in my home across from the Bells. So I'm not a geologist, so I don't know the effect. I do know that Nashville, I love Nashville, I love it. Take care of your neighbor. It's attracted the rich and the famous, and the people looking for a future. And I think it's because of this. You know, let's be kind to our neighbor and doing to others, you know, kind of how you would want to be done to yourself. Okay. Real quickly about the car issue, I have a trouble getting out of my driveway, and I have backed up traffic with one car. We're looking at five, one of those units is going to be a duplex. We're looking at a minimum of 12 cars coming out. That's if there's no teenagers. And oh, do I hope there's not a lot of teenagers in that subdivision. But hopefully, neighborhood values will help determine the future of this property and of Nashville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Lance Whitcomb. I'm at 3900 Woodmont. I'm at the Red Cross from the Bell house on the corner at Wilson. And there's very little parking in that immediate area. My neighbors Clayton and Carol would attest to the fact that a lot of cars do park right in front of our homes when needed. So when parties occur, there's always a line of cars right in front of our houses. So I personally don't believe that with the limited footprint on those properties, that it's not going to, you know, impact the density in such a way that there's going to be a lot more cars going right in front of my house. My five kids run around on that property, and I'm a little timid. And if this goes through, I'm scared as you know what. Thanks.
I'm Michael Niedermeyer, and I live at 3717 Woodmont Boulevard, next door to the Bell property. I was, I'm not, I don't know a lot about city rules and regulations and zoning, but I was educated today to learn that, as I understand it, and I may not understand this correctly, that this is an application to make this a subdivision regulation, which if I understand you correctly, would mean that community character would then not play a role in the development. On that grounds alone, I would recommend that we turn this application down, because, as you've heard from others, the character of the neighborhood is important. When you commissioners look at infill, as you're obviously doing all over the city, if you do a good job, nobody notices, and that's sort of what you want. But if the infill isn't done well, then it's something the rest of us in the neighborhood, and I dare say for this stretch of Woodmont, for many, many people who traverse this stretch all the time, we're left with for the next 50 years. There've been a few early instances down Woodmont where infill has been not, it's been to the detriment of the beauty of the street. These plats don't do this street justice. A drive down Woodmont Boulevard would do justice to what I'm talking about. Thanks for your consideration.
My name is Craig Wirum. I live at 3715 Woodmont Lane, which is just across about a block away from this area, where the neighborhood that flooded as a result of the creek that comes from this direct area. The word infill has been used quite a bit as a value for this committee and for Nashville, and I understand that. I think we don't want to become another Atlanta. But I don't think that changing this particular lot is going to save us from that fate. I also understand that it meets some regulations, but there was one word in the regulations which was mentioned, which is whether or not it's harmonious. And I take that word to mean not only with the architecture, the flavor of the neighborhood, but also with what the neighbors think of this area, because they're the ones that are going to live in it for the rest of their lives after this builder is long gone. You have only heard two people speak for this. Both of them are being paid by the builder. You have heard over 20 to 25 people speak against this. We live in the neighborhood. We're going to be there, we're going to look at this forever. When I moved in this neighborhood almost 20 years ago, there were three homes that I noticed. Two of them were the Niedermeyer home, the other one was the Bell home, and the other one was a castle that was on Estes, which has been torn down and turned into exactly the type of condominiums that your, sort of, or dense population that's being put here. It's a travesty. I used to drive people into that castle and tell them, you know, pull them in there and say, this is my home, when I brought them in to see my house, just because see the expression on their face. It was beautiful. We're losing that. We're losing these grand homes and these grand estates. On a 30,000-foot view, we don't have the sidewalks that we would love from the city. We have not gotten the renovation of that gully for where the floodplains. And I don't know if you've seen the photos of our neighborhood. I have them on a jump drive, and I'd love to give them to the commission if they want to see what happened to our neighborhood in 2010. But I think that the will of the people should be more important here than the desire of a single builder. Thank you for your time.
My name is Stanley McDonald. First, I would like to thank you for holding this hearing and giving us a forum to say something. I live across the street on Woodmont. I have lived there for almost 30 years. Before that, my first home was on Sherondale and 22nd. So I know the area well. I've been up and down Sugar Creek as a kid. I've been in the Bell home. Wonderful people, very gracious, very hospitable. They've done a beautiful job and taken it. The thing I think that has been said time and time again is there was no traffic study. Could you request a traffic study? It is truly hazardous, right in that area where a proposed driveway is to be placed. Second, the property falls off in the back. All of the properties around there fall off in the back. All of it feeds from the old Armstead Estate, where there's a huge meadow, if you will, now, that they use for absorption. The water department has looked in that area, because there are numerous floodplains. And as somebody who does walk the dog twice a day, I see many of my neighbors sump pump going 90 miles a minute when it's dry, pumping out the basement. So I would implore the commission to take a look at this one more time, a little closer, because I honestly do not believe this is going to benefit anybody but the developers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe there's two minutes for rebuttal by the proponents.
Once again, thank you. I'm Kevin Estes, and I'll speak as quickly as I can. Just a few comments. The builder who they keep mentioning, I need to point out, lives on Estes and adjoins this property. So I just want to say that in the fact that Ms. Hayhill building go, and he lives here, so he is a member of this neighborhood also. Second, this slide is very informative when it comes to how close houses are, the size of lots. And I just want to point out, we have done everything to match exactly what's around us, as we have developed this plan. And the very last thing I want to talk about is drainage has been spoken to. It's a very emotional issue. We all lived through the flood. I understand Sugar Tree runs right through these lots. I mean, we have much better standards today. Many of these houses would have buffy yards and would be further away. But these people, these are these houses, it's very important to them, and what we don't want to do is make the situation worse. I can't fix it, I can't improve it, but I can make sure I don't make it worse. We're using a very comprehensive drainage plan that involves pervious pavers, rain gardens, and taking this water, not trying to hold it and release it, but to put it back into the ground and let it recharge it. Many, many of the studies that's been done over the past decades have shown that recharging, it makes these creeks healthier when they dry out, because we take them on the pavement, run it through it real quick, and it goes down. They dry out in the summer and recharge the ground table. Now, us alone won't recharge Sugar Tree Creek, but it is the right thing to do for drainage. Many of them, what they've described is pavement, it flashes off the pavement quick, it goes along a very flat creek, it rises quickly, and it drops quickly. So the best we can do is to put it back and recharge it through rain gardens, pervious pavers, and other things, and that is what we're going to do. And we've discussed this with Stormwater to come up with this plan to try to not make Sugar Tree worse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. Okay. I think before we discuss it ourselves, there's an obvious issue that we may all want to be asking about, which is to have the city's point of view about the drainage and the flooding and the water. So if we could have Mr. Mishu come forward and address that general topic for us as it relates to this particular land.
Sure thing. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners, councilmen. I want to clarify something first. The Stormwater Plan that we have seen so far is just conceptual. This is a concept plan, and the Stormwater is conceptual. Our final designs will come, you know, only after this is approved, if it's approved. What we'll assure you guys is that we'll make sure it's approved before any final development's approved, or before any construction takes place. So that's the first thing. First thing is just conceptual ideas. Rain gardens, infiltration areas, you know, pervious pavement, that's all stuff that meets our requirements. Kevin said something, you know, Sugar Tree is a flashy, you know, creek. It rises fast, it drops fast. There is floodway here, and there's floodway buffers, and this area is, I think, slightly outside of that. And also, our requirements say that houses have to be elevated. So these new constructions will be at least four feet higher than the 100 here. So as far as the new construction, we'll make sure that this is built to today's standard. Let's see. This development is, grading-wise, it's south of Woodmont. So any development over here is probably not going to impact the area, you know, up drainage basin of this. So, you know, the benefit in this area is that this is going to sheet flow straight to Sugar Tree. And if there's a problem, you know, north of Woodmont, it's probably not going to be impacted by this development. But like Kevin said, we'll review a more comprehensive plan before development occurs, and we won't approve anything until it meets all the requirements.
Isn't that, that is part of our code, is it not? I mean, we cannot grant any building permits until you sign off on it. As to whether it will do any, by law, it has to not add to the flooding problem.
Right.
You don't have to fix an existing one, though.
Right. Exactly. The idea is it's not going to make it worse than what it is today.
Right. And so we hear this often all across Nashville, even before the 2010 flood. Neighbors that are always concerned that new construction is going to add to runoff that was experienced well before the flood. So to make those assurances that no new construction can add to, and that's part of their plan that they have to bring before you when it moves from the concept plan to the more detailed plan, correct?
Exactly.
But that is always an anxious thing for neighbors, especially that runoff.
Well, I don't want to speak for the planning department, because I'm not a planner, but I think the process is concept, development, final. And all our stuff, the meat and potatoes of what we get comes in the development stage. You know, there's some areas in even East Nashville. I know there's a lot of groundwater issues here, but even East Nashville, where there's not as many streams, there's a lot, a lot of people with sump pumps and, you know, draining a lot of water. a lot of water at even dry weather.
All right. Before we start discussing this further, are there other questions for Mr. Mishu?
Can you, we've talked about pervious and keeping water shed from running into the creek, but just what you spoke to there, can you talk about just a couple of things that we do to mitigate the water tables rising?
Well, you know...
From within, when it's not coming up from the flooded creek, but when we, when water goes in and rises back.
Well, you know, the majority of...
Somebody talked about the aquifer, so I just wanted to...
Sure. Well, I'm a Stormwater engineer, not a geologist, so I don't want to speak too much of an aquifer. But most of the regulations in most cities, almost all cities, only deal with flow, not the volume of runoff. However, we have this, we have new manual that has, you know, what they call GIPs, which are more volume-based treatments that you could do on your site. And some of them are stuff that they were proposing on this development, such as by-retention and pervious pavement. So along with flow reduction, you know, these features will also do volume reduction as well.
Could you define the, I'm not sure everybody on the commission knows a lot about this, but believe me, tell us what those concepts are again, the rain garden thing.
Well, the idea is that you're going to, instead of, like Kevin said, instead of sending the water right into a pond and just throwing the water down and sending it right into the creek, the idea is to take that water and recharge, you know, the system that's already there, and that kind of reduces the flashiness. You know, this site is not going to, you know, by the time they develop it, if they develop it, they do these low-impact features. It's not going to make, no one's going to, no one's going to look at this development afterwards and say, "Wow, I got flooded before, and I don't now." But they should, on the same idea, say, "After this development, we're not getting any more flooded than what we were getting today."
All right. Any other questions?
One more question. Is it fair to say that in this Woodmont, Estes, Bowling, Hampton area, the current infrastructure is inadequate to support the current runoff? And that there have been projects proposed, but because of city dollars being limited, those projects have been deferred indefinitely?
Well, I don't know if they're deferred indefinitely or not. That's another department, but there is a lot of infrastructure in these infill areas that are, that are undersized. Not too long ago, we had another one that wasn't far from the Bell meet area, where Council Lady Evans was talking about, you know, trying to, you know, secure funds to improve some infrastructure over there. But if there is a problem, you know, people should call it in. We have a record of it, and as funds become available, you know, albeit not as fast as they like, but as funds become available, they will, they will be addressed.
Anyone else have a question for Mr. Mishu?
I do.
Phil.
On the information, in the information that we got in our agenda, it shows a shaded area to represent the flood plain, and it only crosses right at the bottom of this proposed area. Is this a true depiction of the flood plain?
Well, the flood plain is not really a graphical representation. It's, the FEMA maps will dictate what the elevation is, and you'll actually have to use the exact contours that's actually out there to determine, determine the exact flood plain location. So this is a graphical representation. I think if you look at the contours that are out there, it may, it may be even less on the site than what it's showing.
Okay, well, the reason I ask that question is, one of the comments that came up during the discussion said something about the flood plain coming through, the flood coming through there. And I just wondered if really and truly this is flood plain property or much, you know, more than what's depicted on this picture, which may make a difference as far as the, you know, if it was higher up, then it would make a difference on that one lot that could be affected.
Well, one of the earlier iterations actually had a lot of the site in floodway, floodway buffer, and flood plain. As they reduced lots out of, you know, the development, as they morphed into the new development, all the areas in floodway and floodway buffers are pretty much out of lots now, and it reduced the amount of flood plain that's in the development. Our actual requirements don't say that you have to meet our requirements if you're in the flood plain. It says if you're in or adjacent to the flood plain. So whether the flood plain actually touches this property or not, just because the flood plain is adjacent to it, they're going to be held to the flood plain requirements.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Now, it's our turn to discuss and ask questions. Councilman, would you like to start us off?
Not really, but...
Would you do it anyway?
Well, first of all, I just want to clarify. Where I wrote my notes here. We are, again, we're not doing a zoning decision here. We're doing an administrative approval or disapproval.
That's correct.
Okay. And we have three criteria that we're looking, whether we're satisfying or not, right?
Yeah.
Okay, could we have those restated then?
We're reviewing this based on the zoning code and the subdivision regulations.
Okay, so there's only two, it's not three? I thought there were three.
It's a three zoning. Is that farm way is there?
Farm.
It's, it's, okay, okay, yeah, you're right. The subdivision regulations also address a portion of land use policy in terms of the density of the proposed subdivision.
Okay, and so it is the opinion of the staff that all three of these have been met? Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. For our legal counsel, if we were to ignore the fact that these three requirements have been met and recommend against this, then would the applicant have standing to appeal our decision in chance record?
Yes.
And what would the likelihood be that they would prevail?
Depends on what arguments they made, but assuming that they make an argument that because the record, the evidence in the record does not support the decision of the board, assuming that they make some type of arbitrary and capricious argument, then the court could uphold that. When you're going on an appeal to chance record, you're going on a re-assert action, and so whatever is in the record is going to be the basis of what the court determines. So they're going to look to see, does the, does the record support the action that the board took?
Okay, thank you. Councilman, real quickly, to that point, can staff and council clarify for us, within the subdivision regulations, what generally consistent and harmonious really mean?
Thank you.
I'm sorry? Okay. And, you know, it's reviewed on any standard in the subdivision regulations that would apply. In this case, it's a lot of the infill subdivision portion of the regulations, and how policy would apply, and how the subdivision meets the access standards for vehicles, pedestrian standards, the basic standards of Chapter Three of the subdivision regulations for the layout of a subdivision. And in staff's, staff's finding that it meets all of those elements of that chapter of the subdivision regulations, and therefore is consistent with the harmonious development purpose of the subdivision, of those...
I think Mr. Bernhardt may wish to elaborate.
Well, I think that it's very, one, there's the technical aspects of it in terms of the density, the lot pattern, and that type of thing, but I think in terms of harmonious, it was very difficult, if you'll show that aerial again, for staff to recommend, a lot of times, we have lots that are radically different from what's happening around them. In this case, this is basically no different than the lots across the street to the northeast of this, actually to the west and to the east. They're all roughly the same frontage in terms of along Woodmont. And it's kind of, it was hard for staff to figure out, I mean, it's, this lot currently is unique in terms of its positioning relative to the others, but the position of the new subdivision is consistent with what is the pattern that we develop around it.
Could we get that up? Do we have a larger?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, we were seeing something that was the existing and not the proposed.
Oh, oh, okay.
Do we have this, show us this in context of the other, the larger area.
We don't have that plan laid over this, but basically, you have four lots across the street and the block between Estes and Wilson. You have four lots across the street in Wilson to the east, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I mean, you've got four lots on the other side of Estes, basically in the same area, and you've got four lots to the east of this, that are, along the frontage of all this. The frontage is basically the same on all those.
And the setbacks?
We've, yeah.
We've talked about that, but...
You can see from the area, go back to the aerial, what we try to do is to step back the setback. The setback east of, or west of Estes is very close. The setback directly to the east of this is further back, so they're stair stepping those back as they go, long, using the existing house, which is going to stay there as context.
There are a lot of, a lot of lots further towards Helsborough Road that are, in fact, set back a great deal further than some of these. But for this view, you're saying it, it's close to the surrounding area.
Yeah, I mean, they're set back, if you took the setback on the lot to the west of Estes, they're setting back further than that. If you take the one to the east of this, then they're setting back a little closer. So they're kind of stair stepping their way down from the closest to the furthest.
All right. Other questions? Oh, wait a minute, was that all you had right there? Okay.
I was going to say, you know, this is, this is one of those cases that terror at me between my councilman role and my planning commissioner role. There, in my district, there are a lot of zoned areas that allow things that are not necessarily appropriate or wanted, but the zoning is there. And if a particular business or structure moves in, you know, they meet all the requirements, but there's very little that I, as a councilman, can do if they're meeting all the requirements. And even though neighbors sometimes don't agree or don't want what's there, that's the way it happens. And so I certainly, as a council member, can empathize with the neighbors and the folks and the people who have contacted us by letter and by email and so on. And if we were looking at this from a zoning point of view, I think, you know, it would be different. But in the role that we're playing, as we've done a couple of times here recently, as administrators, I don't see that we have a lot of wiggle room here. And it's really, it's really a difficult situation to be in, to say, okay, you have a standard that is being met, and you're being asked, we are being asked to either agree or disagree that the standard is being met. So we're kind of between a, you know, we're in a place that I don't see a lot of room to, to do anything other than to recognize the staff's recommendation as being correct.
Well, having been in that same situation, Councilman, I fully understand what you're saying. Yes, it is, it's between rock and a hard place, for sure. I did want to ask a couple of things. And we were talking about harmonious elements. Does that also include any obligation to the developer to have a harmonious look in the homes that are being proposed? In other words, do they need to be Tudor, or do they need to be a certain architecture?
Subdivision regulations don't regulate architecture at all. They regulate lot pattern.
Does not. Okay, just want to clarify that. Now, as I mentioned about sidewalks, can you clarify that as far as the wall and the sidewalk possibilities?
Here's the, again, here's the site plan of the concept plan. The applicant does show, the plan does show sidewalks along the property frontage, along both street frontages. And also, you might not be able to see the label on here, but the plan does identify the existing wall and shows that it is intended to remain with this development as well.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Just to jump in, just to clarify that, you're saying that the sidewalk, in your estimation, can be built to ADA specifications and keep the wall and have the sidewalks?
Public Works is here can answer that.
Yeah, maybe that's a question for Public Works. If you don't mind, I...
Yeah, no. Okay. Devin Doyle with Public Works. Typically, those issues get addressed during the construction phase, which is, it's the next, it's the development plan phase. From an ADA perspective, as it relates to width, there's plenty, there's plenty of width between the existing curb face and the wall structure to meet ADA standards. And I can assure you, any sidewalk that is required in any subdivision or any development as part of the construction review process is held to the standard, obviously, of meeting all ADA requirements. So any sidewalk related to any development is required, and some level of assurance is provided by the Department of Public Works that it conforms with current ADA standards.
I guess the point, though, was, given the stated desire by half the applicant and the neighbors that that stone wall remained, and probably legally remained, given the historic designation, I think, does those, those two things together can both happen without moving behind the wall with the sidewalk?
Yes, and I, and I don't know exactly. I live in the area as well. I'm very familiar with the location. And there's, there's no distance limitation that limits them from meeting any path of travel, you know, width of path of travel. That's, that's the only limitation that I can imagine that could be impacted.
Okay, thank you.
While you're there, because I too had questions about the sidewalk, the utilities, so the poles, because sometimes those poles are right in the middle of the sidewalks.
Right, right, yes. And I think we had some preliminary discussion about that internally, and I'm not aware of any issues, including the utilities, that would preclude them from meeting or conforming with current ADA standards.
Does that standard, the ADA standard, does not then require a verge, a grassy verge between the sidewalk and the street?
No.
It's just something that is good practice, I guess.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Is there, so there's no drainage ditch between the wall and the shoulder of the road?
No.
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of in this traditional sense. This is curbed, this is a curbed section.
Straight, okay.
So, so this sidewalk, it's a sidewalk, Woodmont Boulevard, right here, there's no grassy little...
No, there's grass, and I don't know exactly, I mean, we could ask the engineer who's here. I don't know precisely what the dimension is between the back of the curb and the existing stone wall. But, but there's enough separation there to conform with ADA standards. I don't know if you have the ability to ask that question or not.
We do. We can ask him. I can ask him. I'll ask you. I ask you.
Woodmont is currently curbed and gutted. There's approximately 15 feet between Woodmont and the historic rock wall. There's no, I don't want to say no, there's no poles. I don't recall seeing poles on that side of the road, but, okay. But even if there are, we have the ability to bend around a pole and meet the ADA specifications.
See?
This, most time, we have a four-foot grass strip and a five-foot sidewalk, which takes nine feet. We have at least 15 feet, it may even be a little bit wider, between the curb and the wall. And then it's curbed and gutted on Estes, too. Like you said, the turn lane tapers down towards the end of this property. So we don't have drainage ditches to contend with, or very, many of the things we often contend with, we have uncurbed roads where we have drainage ditches, and we have to figure out how to go behind them or in front of them, fill them in and put storm sewer in the road. That exists already. So I'm not saying it's super simple, but there's room to, and enough room to make it work.
Well, while you're here, you, you do then affirm that you're not planning to, if you get approvals for this as subdivision, you do not plan to seek to waive this sidewalk, do you?
No, I don't want to sit there and get shot at about tearing this wall down or waiving a sidewalk. We make sure there's enough room to put the sidewalk in.
But you will put the sidewalk in and not request some kind of waiver?
Yeah.
If this gets approved?
If it gets approved. It's our intention to put this sidewalk in, yeah. That's, that's the requirement.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Public Works?
No, but as it relates to this being the concept plan, so when we get to the, to the development phase, it does not necessarily have to come back to us, but we can request that it does.
Normally, when a concept plan is approved, subsequent phases, the development planning and final plat can be approved administratively as long as those plans are consistent with the approved concept plan. But... But the commission could make a statement or a condition, I guess, in the concept plan approval, that future, that the development plan and/or final plat should come back to the commission.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that we had that right. So currently, what can be built on here now is two duplexes and seven lots?
Under the current, under the current zoning and the current layout, the two lots, a detached duplex would be permitted on each of those existing two lots.
Where did I get seven lots?
The zoning is R-20, and based on the acreage of the lot, the lot could possibly yield up to seven lots. But again, another concept plan would be required for more lots.
It would be another concept plan, okay. As it relates to, and I know because this is a subdivision with only, with a small number of homes being put here, that a traffic study is not warranted. But what about a site study? So coming out of the driveway onto Estes, don't we still, Public Works, need to look at the site to make sure that, you know, you're not getting blindsided if you're trying to turn left into the left turn lane or right?
No, you're referring to like site distance issues and concerns?
Yes, yes.
Right. As part of our, as part of our construction plan review process, there's a stipulation that they meet all ASHTO, which is the Highway Design Manual, standards for site distance.
And when does that happen? In the development?
At the, at the development, is that the development plan phase? It's the construction plan. So when they, of course, there's, I mean, I have familiarity with the site and I'm not aware of any site distance. There's some topography, I guess, on Estes, but in this particular location, I'm not aware of any site distance issues.
Okay. I know that that was a concern from some of the neighbors. And I want to thank the neighbors for all your passion and coming together and all the letters I received at home. Thank you for that.
Anyone else have any questions for Public Works? Is that okay, Judy?
Yeah, that was good for Public Works. Oh, Public Works, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question? What's the, do you know what the length of stacking in that turn lane, if you were trying to turn left onto Woodmont, is there a turn lane there?
You mean the existing storage?
Storage, that's the word, sorry.
No, that's fine.
I guess, I don't, if you don't know it, don't...
I don't, yeah, I don't know it off the top of my head.
I think that's more of a concern, I mean, I think you're right about site distance, but if the cars are stored trying to turn left onto Woodmont, is there a criterion at all for how we, where we place an exiting driveway to come into that stopped traffic?
Well...
I don't know, how does that turn?
Well, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I believe that queues, at least at certain times of the day, primarily, I think, maybe in the morning and possibly like midday, afternoon. You know, it probably queues beyond Dartmouth. So you have the same issue coming out of Dartmouth of what you're describing here, trying to pull out of that public street intersection. So, you know, generally speaking, we try to get as much separation as possible from the nearest intersection, you know, using reasonable design standards and so forth. And there are other things that we have to take into account, either roadway or driveway placements on the opposite side of the road. We've reviewed this plan based on the number of lots, the expected generated traffic and the location of the proposed access points. And we did not have any concerns regarding traffic.
Thank you very much. We're back to Judy.
Okay. Just a few more things, and I'll pass it on to my colleagues. There was a concern from some of the neighbors who live on Dartmouth that they did not receive notification. So I know that there is a certain feet zone that the letters go out. Did they fall outside of that? Is that why they were not notified?
I can't remember where the, where those...
Their address was 38 something?
Basically, the notices are sent out to properties within 300 feet.
Within 300 feet. So most likely, they fell outside of that and that's why they didn't...
To give you an idea, the length of the property frontage here is about 400 feet. So it doesn't go, it doesn't go a huge distance out from the edge of the property.
Okay. So it didn't have to go very far.
It didn't go 300 feet from the edge of the property?
I thought it was from the edge.
From the edge, that's right. It has to go 300 feet from the edge of the property.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Wait a minute. We're at our point of discussion.
I had another issue, but I'll go on because I've probably talked long enough, but I'll come back to me.
All right. Thank you. Hunter?
When I first read the staff report and realized which property we were talking about here, I thought, wow, what a shame. I mean, that was sort of my initial reaction. It's a beautiful piece of property. It's really an anomaly in the neighborhood. It's a bigger, you know, piece of property than most of the other lots. But unfortunately, my motion really isn't what we're, you know, here to talk about and to decide upon. I mean, it's, we've heard from Public Works that their plan meets the storm regulation, stormwater regulations and will be required to, we've heard from, excuse me, from stormwater, we've heard from Public Works that meets the traffic regulations. And I suppose really may even, the proposal may even have less of an impact than what they might be able to propose by right anyways. I don't know that for a fact, but I suppose a lot of the lots along Woodmont and Estes have driveway, every lot has its own driveway. And that's not what they're proposing here. They're proposing only two, two access points for all the lots. Likewise, they are proposing less density than what they're allowed by right. They've modified their plan to, in my opinion, create a harmonious lot pattern, setbacks. And those are the things that the subdivision regs address. They've addressed the sidewalk requirements of the subdivision regs. I haven't heard any testimony that specifically states, with the exception of harmonious, that it doesn't meet the subdivision regs. And in my opinion, it does, it is harmonious for the reasons that Rick covered earlier and have been discussed. So I really don't see much of a choice here for us. I don't necessarily like that this beautiful property is being developed. But I suppose there were probably farmsteads in this area that didn't like when all of these subdivisions were being developed. But they created a great neighborhood out of it ultimately. So, you know, I think we tend to be resistant to change, certainly, and we will miss seeing this beautiful, you know, piece of property. But, you know, I'm not sure we have much of a choice here.
I too am troubled. I drive by this every morning taking my daughter to school. And Hunter, I think you make a case for it being harmonious. I'm not sure I can get to being consistent. And my question for counsel is, if the applicant were to appeal our ruling, we ruled against staff, you know, what happens and how does he fight the consistency subjective issue?
Really, the harmonious piece actually comes into play as to, and I think this kind of ties into your question, as to why the subdivision regulations have been adopted for the harmonious development of land. That's why the sub regs are adopted. Now, once the sub regs are adopted, then you look at the sub regs for the criteria to apply to each individual application that's coming. So I don't want you to get the impression that harmony or harmonious is a separate prong for this subdivision reg. The regs have already been, have already been adopted. Now, if this were appealed, you know, how would, can I, I'm going to try to restate your question, how would a court look at what the, what the board is doing in terms of whether or not it's harmonious or not? I think a court, and I can't, I can't speak for the court, I don't want to necessarily speculate, but I think what would probably happen is, the court is going to look to see whether the action that was taken by the board was illegal, arbitrary, or capricious in terms of how they applied the standards that they were supposed to apply. And the standards that they've got to apply based on this whole section, and throughout this section, it refers to the code and it refers to the regs. And that's what the decision has to be based on. And it talks about, the commission's decision has to be either to approve, to disapprove, or to prove, to conditionally approve, or to disapprove. And then it goes on to say that if there is a disapproval, the planning commission shall state specific reasons for that disapproval that shall be entered into the minutes of the meeting. Now, if you find that persons that made cases here, made cases based on the regs or based on the code and based on some element that was not met based on the regs or based on the code, then that's how you get into considering, because I think, I'm kind of hearing, or what I'm thinking I'm hearing is, how do you get to the elements that were brought to you? If they, if anyone brought up things that dealt with the code or on the regs, then I think you have to give that some weight. If it, if it comes to just conjecture or speculation or fear, those are things that the courts have typically not, not supported when coming to review. But if there's some data that would support any of the, any of the assertions, or if there is an element of the code or the regs that have not been met and that has been brought out through this public hearing discussion, then I think the board has to consider that. And that, that would be what the court is going to look to see if that was considered. Also, if there is any evidence in the record, now, it's going to be kind of a lower standard than what one might think. If there is any evidence in the regs, I mean, any evidence in the record, rather, to support the board's decision, then arguably, the court is supposed to uphold the board's decision. So...
But, but to go a little further, the consistency and harmoniousness or harmony of the regs is subjective and not specific within the subdivision regulations?
Right. That's correct, because the board has some authority to interpret its regs.
Could I, could I help clarify that perhaps? Did you say earlier that consistent and harmonious speaks to the purpose of the subdivision regulations?
Yes, it does.
It's not a subdivision regulation.
That's correct.
It's part of the enabling legislation that state law allows you to do that in order to create harmonious development. You're allowed to do subdivision regulations.
Jeff?
You know, I understand the neighbors' concerns. The applicant's representatives talk about design guidelines and restrictions will be in place, and yet, no one's seen them, staff hasn't seen them. You know, we have no idea what these homes are going to look like, nor, and Rick said we shouldn't base our decision on that, but that would concern me as a neighbor. That's all I got right now.
Derek? Greg?
My colleagues have talked a lot of, about a lot what I was going to ask, so a lot of the questions, I think I have one remaining question was, there was some testimony that the zoning had been changed. What, when was that changed, Rick, Judy, and why?
I don't know where it may be, Greg, I mean, it hadn't been recent. It may have been 1998 when they resumed the whole county.
That's what I was thinking.
But I don't know, it hadn't been recent.
So, just to clarify, by right or by law, what could they build there again?
With the existing two lots, they could put a duplex on each lot, and the duplex, the duplex would be permitted to be detached, which means that the two residences wouldn't have to share a wall. So you could have, you could have four dwelling units on the site.
Okay. So just, you know, I'm kind of new to the commission, and so I need to make sure...
Wait a minute, to clarify that, is that in addition to the existing home?
No. You could tear down the current home and have four...
Or you could leave the existing home and build the other half of that, I guess, detached duplex on that lot, and then have another...
So you could literally have four new homes here?
You could have three, you could keep the existing one and have three new ones.
Or tear down the current home and build four new...
Build four new ones.
Would that be with two driveways, probably with a duplex or four?
And you wouldn't have to go through a subdivision, you know, you wouldn't have to go through a concept plan either, right?
That's right.
Correct. Okay. So, you know, it's kind of like a gut check, I guess, is the, the way that I would put it, is that the reality behind, you know, and I appreciate the neighbors coming here. I mean, I, just so you know, when I was councilman in Creve Hall, I changed the entire zoning down to, from an R to RS. And a lot of people looked at me and said, why'd you do that? And I said, well, because the neighbors wanted me to. And it was, I felt like it was the right thing to do, to downzone my area to keep the integrity of Creve Hall intact. I totally understand your concerns, you know, given the current law and what they're proposing here. You know, this is a beautiful home, and if you don't, if we don't approve this, they could legally tear down the home or not tear down the home and build three other homes. And so, you know, you still have the traffic issues that could potentially be there. You still have the water issues that could potentially be there. It's a matter of, I think now, is approving the right plan for the area. And, you know, I know the first plan didn't seem right at all. You know, it still doesn't seem, I guess, very much, a lot of harmony, knowing the area, because I really like the area as well. But, you know, when you start getting down to the details of it, are the setbacks correct? Probably. Are they consistent with what we do as a planning commission in Davidson County? Probably. In a court of law, they would probably say, yeah. You know, they're, they look pretty consistent with the other neighbor. There's four lots on each side, there's four lots on to the west, there's four lots to the other side. You know, I think it would be really hard for a court not to approve some type of plan for this area. So, I mean, as much as I hate it, you know, they've given you the sidewalk, the plans put the sidewalk in, they're keeping the retaining wall, they're keeping a lot of the trees. I don't really like that second driveway kind of in the back off, not the one off of Estes Road. But I just don't know how we could argue that in good faith, make a case that, against the staff proposal. You know, what I would fear is the house being torn down and by right, just building two, you know, two, you know, four, four separate homes there and losing the wall, losing all of the other things. I just think that there's more to lose, maybe. That's just my thoughts. It's a bad situation.
Yeah, this isn't any fun for any of us. But thank you very much, all of you, for coming. Somebody said they were glad to live in the United States. I constantly feel happy that this body, everybody is very civil and very, you know, very thoughtful in their presentation. And passions are high. It's admirable. So thank you. One of the things I thought about, too, is, you know, when you just feel sick that you're, if you're going to lose something, you know, the other alternative, I guess, would be to, if somebody could put it on the historic register and protect it forever. And I just don't think that's probably going to happen. If the stone wall is, fortunately, the Bells fought that battle for us all. And I think that if we saw suddenly two duplexes and, or two sets of duplexes in a number of driveways before any of us knew about it, that would be pretty horrible. I think a big concern when I looked at this was, you know, my thought of Woodmont is the big houses setback and how that feels and the character of that area. And then I looked more closely, more closely, and I realized what we've talked about, that the lots across the street sort of match what we're talking about here being proposed. The sizes match this microcosm of Woodmont. And what I wanted to ask is, this is R-20, and as you go towards Hillsborough, if you pull out and look at the zoning, where the lots are larger, wider, the setbacks are deeper, is the zoning different there as you go east on Woodmont? Do you have that map handy or is that something...
During the public comment, I pulled up our website. I might be able to find it on there.
And while you're looking for, the reason I'm asking the question is, I think a lot of the concern is, well, if this goes, then will all of those lots go? And it may not be, it may not even be a question if the zoning is different. And it may not be, it may not even be a question if the zoning is different. Am I, is that...
Here's the zoning map.
If you go...
And you can see the site that we're talking about is right here, at Woodmont and Estes.
So, there are lots of small lots even west of Bowling. And if you go farther east, when the lots get bigger, the setbacks get deeper. I mean, one of the beauties of Woodmont is that it's like you could draw a ruler, and all the setbacks match, depending on the size of the lot, so...
If I could, let me just point out something here, because it's, you see that lot pattern there between Hilldale?
Yeah, I mean, it's amazing.
That's exactly what we talked about on the previous case, case number two.
Right.
Somebody could come in and tear a house down. There's probably houses on, you know, three or four of those lots. You could tear that down and build a single house on each one of those lots today.
In the reverse of what we did before, right. Okay, I just, I'm sort of saying that for all of our constellations, not really the word, but this is a different zoning to the east, which would mean, if anything, I mean, it just, it would create a different situation than what we have right on this corner.
That's right, to the east, it looks like it's zoned RS 10.
I meant, like, this R 40, the bigger lots, that are more similar in scale to this lot. Because right around this lot, there aren't anything, there isn't anything that, to that scale, but there are to the east. But they're not zoned RS 20, or RS 10. Am I right?
Go a little further to the east on that. Great. Yeah.
Yeah, there. Okay.
You can see that this is zoned RS 40.
Right, and the lots...
Here's the zoning line.
And does that continue all the way to Woodmont, I mean, all the way to Hillsborough? Yeah.
There's a little church down there somewhere.
I think, given all those components, and some comfort level, that that zoning is different than this zoning, this, changing this lot into five houses isn't going to be a domino instantly down the rest of Woodmont. I think it's been an issue that has come up, not tonight, but I've heard it.
Okay, great. I'd like to offer a couple of thoughts here.
Well, one thing I was going to say is, I think if we're going to approve this, I would like to request that we do review, we do have the ability to review the development plan.
Right. Well, I'm not sure we're completely ready for a motion yet, but when there is one...
That's what I had before, it's almost...
Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay, I, you know, I think I was stunned when I realized where they were talking about, kind of like Hunter. And you were getting at what I've been thinking, Andre, that the south side of Woodmont and the east side of Woodmont, between Estes and Hillsborough, are very different than most of these other quadrants. And they are, they are much, the predominant number of lots are much more like what we have here now than what's on the other side of Estes, and that was in the initial several pictures we saw. So, it just seemed wrong, and it seemed a shame that we didn't have an overlay. We may overuse overlay sometimes, and sometimes we don't. It's very, to me, I can see why people are heartbroken that this is even being discussed. And I also agree, and I know that we are, that harmonious is not a legal doctrine as we were thinking, as people were thinking about applying it, but it also never has meant harmonious, meaning everybody needs to agree. We'd never have any rezonings, and I get that. But I am not sure, given the gigantic change that this is going to be for that immediate area, that we have, even now, even after a whole lot of work by neighbors to raise issues, and the proposers of this to resolve issues, I don't know that we have the best product that we could get. And if you'll indulge me, I'd like to read a little something from Sean McGuire. "I ask that you consider the opposition before you make this decision on this subdivision request. As I have experienced previously in my years serving as the councilman for District 25, there could potentially be a compromise that is reached between the neighborhood and the applicant. At the very least, I would urge that you defer a vote to allow for more time for discussion among the neighborhood and the applicant. However you feel that you must make a decision on this subdivision request this afternoon, I would ask that you side with the overwhelming majority of the neighborhood and vote to disapprove it." I have, we know Sean, and have heard from him many times, and I think he's one of our more careful council members. I have not seen him as being anti-development, at all. I have never gotten a letter quite like this from him. I am going to suggest that we at least give some consideration, given the enormity of the change to what people were used to, and all of the concerns that people have raised, some of which are beyond our fixing. I do not, I think it would be a reasonable idea for us to defer this decision for at least one meeting, and in a spirit of harmoniousness, not because they have to necessarily, but I think neighbors and owners and developers on this ought to see if there are any potential changes or strengthenings of this that would help everyone. And maybe that's just a simple way to look at it, but in light of Sean's request, and the fact that I don't think we can successfully be sued for a deferral, I don't see why we wouldn't do that. That's just my thought.
Well, just to clarify, the state law requires the planning commission to act 60 days after its hearing, or it's deemed to be approved. Today's the day, the 60-day clock starts today, and so you...
We have 60 days if we wanted it.
Right. Stuart, let me add to that. If we're going to defer, I would ask the neighborhood to recognize what Andre said, in that, number one, the house can be torn down, number two, they can build duplexes by law. And so, the neighborhood needs to go into this with a spirit of compromise and willingness to work with the applicant, or we're not going to make any progress during the deferral.
Right, but I also think the developer needs to recognize that while, while they've come a long way from the original idea of linking Estes and Woodmont, with the cut-through street and some other things, I think they need to, if we do this, it needs to be with them being very open to things that they maybe don't have to do, but ought to do, perhaps in the spirit of the current owner, who, while I'm sure people are not happy right now, certainly has been, in many ways, an excellent citizen, and is responsible for some of the things that will be protected. That's just my idea. I don't know what, how that strikes other people, that we defer for, well, we've got 60 days, what do you think? Is there any problem with that?
Well, the only thing to consider is that, even though the state law allows you to defer, would allow you to defer it up to 60 days, you have subdivision regs that say you have to make a decision within 30 days. So, what I would suggest to you, if you are inclined to defer it, to defer one meeting, and let us resolve the conflict between those two, and give you a solid answer on if you have any more time, if you want to take that.
So, state law could control, maybe, but at any rate, you'd like to have, you could give us an answer on that, but if we did it for one meeting, you know, we'd be...
We're no...
I, I'm not sure this would result in a lot of change, but it might if everybody approaches it with creativity and good faith, I don't know.
I have one more question. In the staff recommendations, they said that they would recommend deferral to February the 14th, if the Fire Marshal's Office had, recommends the approval of the concept plan prior, if they didn't.
If they didn't.
Yeah, we got recommendations from the Fire Marshal.
Okay, so, and so, in your initial comments, Greg, you said that there was a requirement that the fire flow be at a certain point, so that preliminary approval by the Fire Marshal indicates then that that fire, that rate flow is there, or can be accomplished?
The subdivision will have to meet that fire flow requirement, most likely, at the next step, at the development plan phase.
Okay, okay.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we move for deferral to the February 14th meeting.
Is there discussion of that motion in seconds?
I just have a question. We don't have to have any reason, or state any specific questions about the subdivision regs to defer.
No.
Okay, thank you.
One question that I heard through the audience, that somebody mentioned when they were talking about complying the sidewalks, which I think we've talked about, but the, there's a U.S. DOT Section 4 about relating to Riley Parkway. I don't know what that is, but if it's important, could the staff put that in their report when we come back, please?
The spirit of the motion is not just that we defer it for one meeting, for us to cogitate on it, but that we, we can't force anyone, but that we urge anyone with an interest to be thinking and meeting about this if they can. Yes?
I could just address the spirit. I don't know if our motions can have spirits necessarily, but on something that's so black and white as the subdivision regulations, and I don't want us to, A, and it's hard not to, because this is a very emotional thing, but one, I don't think we can sort of victimize the neighborhood, nor can we hold the developer to a different standard than our subdivision regs require. So, if we see this exact same proposal back here next month, regardless of what happens between the neighbors and the applicant, unless there's new testimony, or this commission or the staff finds reason that it doesn't meet the subdivision regs, I think we know what our obligation is, so...
And then, are we closing?
I'd like to leave it a little more ambiguous than that, but you know what your obligation is, and we all will decide. So, I'd like to keep that open a little bit.
And we'll leave the public hearing closed?
It has been closed. I think, I think this is, I mean, we can accept any written comments, but the public hearing itself is closed at this point. So, are you ready to vote? Did we vote?
We have a second.
We had a second.
We have a second.
All in favor of the motion to defer one meeting, vote aye. Aye. All opposed, vote no. Just defer for one meeting. Okay, goodbye. We need to keep a quorum if we can, but I know some of you have to go, one, two, three, four. Well, sit here. Do we have to do anything else, or is it all reports?
We're going to lose them.
No, you don't have to have anything. I was going to report on some things, but you don't have to vote them.
Yes. Members who have to leave, we have reports left, but nothing we absolutely have to vote on. But Rick has a report that he'd like to make to us, those of us who can stay. If everyone could sort of, I know, if you could move on out, because we are still meeting. Thank you.
Also, I wanted to make sure that we get this on the record for the TV, so the people there can go through some of this. I'll just remind you that more mundane parts, your financial disclosure forms, if you haven't, and I'm sure all of you have, have to be filed by the end of this month, which is rapidly approaching, and will help you if you need any help or any information on financial disclosure. Next week, big week for fairgrounds plan, in accordance with the council's directive, there will be a joint meeting on, there'll be a public meeting, let me put it this way, Monday night, next Monday night, right here...
Excuse me. I'm sorry, I'd like to ask everyone if you could to move on out in the hallway so we could finish the next few reports. Thanks.
Next Monday night, in this room, at 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock, there will be a presentation to the general public on the findings of the consultant. And then, on Tuesday, the 29th, from 11:30 to 1:30, they will be making a presentation to the planning commission, the parks board, and the fair board. And if you haven't gotten your lunch request in to Kelly, we would ask that you do that. As I mentioned last time, this is Brenda's last meeting, and we wish her well on her endeavors with T.DOT. We haven't done that. Music City Center Tour, for any commissioner that wants to do that, is scheduled, we'll contact you individually if you want to, but we have it scheduled for Thursday, February 7th, at 11 o'clock. From our GIS people, we've gotten great praise from the election commission, we just completed a polling place finder for the election commission, that will also be available as a, in mobile-ready format, so that you'll know where you're supposed to go to poll. Let me hit a couple of things on the general plan, if, where's somebody, where are my slides there? Let me see. Bob, if you could run those up here, I'd appreciate it. These are just some things I want to make sure that you're aware of, the steering committee, just kind of go to the end of those slides. Oh, there they are. That's it, that's it, I guess. Yeah, that one there. Can you open it up? We, the steering committee has, or there has been a citizens engagement committee, community engagement committee that is appointed. I'm not going to go through all these names, but the purpose of this committee is to work through the plan to make sure that we deal with all segments of the community, and I want to make you aware of the diversity of this committee. And if you'll, I mean, look through that, wait, just, yeah, kind of go through the, there's four pages of those, you'll see that about 30 members represent different groups. Go to the next one. All right? Okay, and then, the logo was finalized at the steering committee meeting. This will be the Nashville Next Plan, and the purpose of this is to provide something that we're moving forward, we're going to move forward with the community, this logo and name you'll be seeing. The next one here, this kind of brings it together in terms of a statement of what the plan is, it's looking, it's looking to the future, it's not natural the way we were, natural the way we are, it's natural we want to be and become. And it'll be involved in engaging a lot of people as we go forward. Next. The key thing, and we'll be getting individual invitations to this, will be the kickoff. This is the start of the public engagement process. There will involve seven speakers. The first speaker is on Saturday, February 16th, at the main library. We will have a series of activities for people that are there, in terms of visioning and what's next, but Paris Glenn Dinning, former governor of Maryland, will be our keynote speaker, and Mayor Dean will be there to do the charge. That will be followed, go to the next one if you would, by a six-series, speaker series, a six-element series, that will cover the key elements of the plan, what's coming out of the white papers, we'll be releasing white papers, we'll be having a visioning process. These are all going to be on a Monday evening, roughly at 5:30. The next night, on Tuesday, we will be holding a one-hour call-in special on Channel 50+ that will take excerpts from the speech, and will be soliciting comments. Channel 5 will be actually taping each one of these speeches, we'll be streaming each one of them live, there will be a question and answer period as part of the speech, and so we'll be getting questions and answers from the people that are there, as well as from people that are online. But just, but basically, we're going to cover this and make this available as the kickoff here. Let's see if there's anything else. These are the steering committee members, I think that we've done this once, but I wanted to make sure that you're aware of the steering committee. And once again, the plan is anchored in four fundamental pillars that are at the core of this. Metro Government focusing on services and facilities, the Land Trust for Tennessee that's focusing on ensuring that the plan adequately deals with environmental resources and natural resources, Chamber of Commerce ensuring we have an adequate economic base for, in Nashville for all of us, that ensures that the plan represents and reflects the diversity and equity of the issues that we're going to be dealing with and going forward. So, with that, I just want to make you aware of it, there's a lot of activities that will begin in February as we go forward, starting with the plan development. We need your involvement.
Thank you. Is there any other report? Did you want to give a legislative report, councilman?
No, but there was, on the agenda, there was something on there about our retreat decree.
Yeah, the question is whether you wanted to wait until the chairman got back. He asked, I mean, I think I put it on there, and he didn't, wasn't here, so...
Did we approve the contract as part of the...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. She's already, she's lassoed in now.
All right. I believe then, we are adjourned. Thank you.